At least a dozen other states have their own laws to reduce it. Although experts applaud LED's energy-saving technology, they urge those who use it to consider the long-term effects they will have on our planet. For Here and Now, I'm Yvonne Zuntobal.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Tiziana Deering in Boston.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. This is Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and from Nuance. Nuance is committed to helping physicians restore their work-life balance with DAX, an AI-powered solution that automates clinical documentation. Learn more at nuance.com/wburr.
McCarthy is going to have to negotiate with the White House. He's going to have to negotiate with Democrats, and he's going to have to come back to his conference with some sort of compromise. And that is going to be the test for him and for his speakership.
I'm Michael Barbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
Tune in for The Daily weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ.
The programs on Radio IQ are supported in part by J.F. Brown Real Estate, providing market knowledge and consultation to buyers and sellers in the Shenandoah Valley, mountains, Lexington, and beyond. JFBrowneRealEstate.com.
No matter where you are or what device you use to listen to Radio IQ, we've got your back. You can listen with the TuneIn app, NPR One. Ask your smart speaker to play Radio IQ, or go online to radioiq.org. Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV, Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WICE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
Funding for Here and Now comes from MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software, accelerating the pace of engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com.
From NPR and WBUR Boston, I'm Tiziana Deering.
And I'm Scott Tong. This is Here and Now. Coming up, First Republic Bank is no more, so 84 branches are opening today under the JP Morgan Chase banner after regulators organized a takeover and then a sale.
Also, many are still trying to escape the fighting in cartoon Sudan. The U.S. has started convoys of buses to get people to port Sudan and across to Saudi Arabia. And William Landay's bestselling Defending Jacob was about a DA whose son is accused of murder. His new book deals with similar subject matter.
I did want to continue to explore what I've always explored in my books, which is the intersection of crime and family, and what crime can tell us about ourselves.
Coming up, Here and Now.
The news is first?
Live from NPR News in Washington, I'm Lakshmi Singh. The FDIC is suggesting possible changes in the way bank deposits are insured. NPR Scott Horsley reports the move comes after three bank failures that followed a rapid withdrawal of uninsured deposits.
Ever since the Great Depression, the FDIC has provided insurance for bank deposits so customers know they'll get their money back, even if a bank fails. The insurance usually covers deposits up to a quarter million dollars per account. While that protects the vast majority of bank customers, a relatively small number of very large accounts are uninsured. And when that money's suddenly withdrawn, it can rattle the overall banking system. The FDIC suggests unlimited insurance would probably be too costly and might encourage undue risk-taking by banks, but a targeted increase in coverage limits for business accounts might offer some advantages, especially if paired with other policies such as limits on rapid withdrawals. Any change in the insurance system would require an act of Congress. Scott Horsley, NPR News, Washington.
China is expected to be a major focus when President Biden meets this hour with the president of the Philippines, Ferdinand Marcos Jr. Here's NPR Scott Detrow.
China has been a key topic in most of Biden's sit downs with other world leaders in recent years. That's especially true of Marcos and the Philippines. The country's naval ships and fishing vessels have repeatedly been confronted by China's navy as the country tries to stake a claim to territory in the South China Sea. With that in mind, the U.S. and Philippines have amped up military cooperation, including more joint drills and base use agreements. Biden and Marcos will talk about that in the Oval Office. Among other announcements, officials say Biden will transfer several military airplanes and naval vessels to the Philippines. Scott Detrow, NPR News, Washington.
Demonstrators in France are taking to the streets on International Workers' Day, also known as Labor Day or May Day. Many protesting French President Emmanuel Macron and his move pushing through retirement changes without a vote, effectively raising retirement age 62 to 64. Here's NPR's Eleanor Beardsley in Paris.
I'm out in the May Day traditional workers' marches, and these are usually joyous affairs with families and workers out here. And it still kind of is, but it's taken on an angry tone. There's a lot of people directly protesting Macron because they say he shoved through his retirement law, raising the retirement age without a parliamentary vote. And he doesn't listen to the people, and he just doesn't care. There's a lot of anger out here this year.
NPR's Eleanor Beardsley reporting. The FBI and Texas law enforcement are spending a third day searching for the gunman behind Friday night's mass shooting in a rural community of Cleveland. Governor Greg Abbott's put up $50,000 as a reward for information leading to Francisco Oropez's capture. The suspect is accused of killing five of his neighbors, including a nine-year-old boy. Police say they have recovered the AR-15-style rifle that was used in the shootings. This is NPR News. The White House says U.S. intelligence estimates are that Russia's military campaign in and around Ukraine's Bakhmut region has come at a high cost for Russian forces. National Security Council spokesman John Kirby updated reporters a short time ago.
Just since December, we estimate that Russia has suffered more than 100,000 casualties, including over 20,000 killed in action, nearly half of whom were Wagner soldiers.
He says Russia's assessment that it's suffered far fewer losses is, as he put it, ludicrous. Striking federal government workers in Canada have reached a tentative agreement with Ottawa, but, as Dan Karpunchak tells us, another 35,000 who work for the Canada Revenue Agency are still on strike.
The national strike by the Public Service Alliance of Canada is over, and all members except those still in talks are required to return to work today or for their next shift. The union says the proposed deal includes wage increases of 12.6% over three years versus such as income tax processing and passport and immigration applications. The union says online ratification votes will be held soon. For NPR News, I'm Dan Karpunchak in Toronto.
On Wall Street, we see the Dow is up 52 points at 34,151. This is NPR News.
Support for NPR comes from NPR stations. Other contributors include Indeed, a hiring platform designed to streamline the hiring process. Indeed works to help businesses attract, interview, and hire candidates in one place. More at indeed.com/NPR.
Here is your Radio IQ forecast. A wind advisory is in effect until 8:00 AM Tuesday for Grayson, Carroll, and Floyd counties. Fairly cloudy for us this afternoon. Spotty showers possible. Temperatures from 50 for Wise to 65 for Richmond will be windy as well, partly to mostly cloudy tonight. A bit more clearing for the Danville area. A stray shower or two is still possible, and will stay windy as well. Lives in the upper 30s and mid 40s into the upper 40s for Fredericksburg and Richmond. And pretty cloudy for everyone Tuesday. Another chance for a few stray showers will still be windy, too.
From NPR and WBUR, I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC.
I'm Tiziana Deering in Boston. It's Here and Now. The 84 branches of First Republic Bank are opening today as JP Morgan Chase Bank. That's according to JP Morgan, which struck a deal with federal regulators to buy First Republic Bank early this morning.
The Federal Deposit Insurance Corporation engineered this shutdown of First Republic and then the sale to JP Morgan. We should note that First Republic is the third bank to fail this year, and it's the largest. Karen Shaw-Petru is co-founder and managing partner of Federal Financial Analytics. She advises banks and regulators. Welcome to Here and Now.
Hi.
First Republic has been on the rocks for weeks after the failures of Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank. We know its stock plummeted last week. In the end, why did regulators race to close it down early this morning? Were they trying to project come to the market?
I think the question is, why did it take them so long? And then they raced this morning? Because it's been clear since Signature and Silicon Valley Bank failed that banks like First Republic were very much on the edge. And there were various efforts to sustain First Republic, but it was also clear none of them was going to work.
And I'll ask our clerk, Ms. Susan McCord, to please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Here.
Ms. White Boyd.
Here.
Mr. Volison.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Mr. Pritti.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. And a form, Mr. President. Is Pastor Walter LaFleur here? Okay, good to see you. All right, we're going to be having our invocation by Pastor LaFleur, pastor of the Unitarian Universalist Church of Roanoke. And following his invocation, our Legion of Pledges of Lilies. So everybody stand, please. Dear one, seeer of seeing, knowing, knower of all-knowing, named and unnamed, we're thankful for another day, thankful for the opportunity to be of service, to be of service to the greater good of service, what is true and what's right of service, to that which is unfolding and coming to be. May we see beyond our own minds creations, hear more than our own thoughts, accept more than our own beliefs. May we be open to all that is good and right. May we be ever mindful of those who are here, who we are here to represent. Be with us this day. Help us to do good work. Amen. Asha, and may it be. (Clerk) The United States of America, and truly the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming out to our second session of the day. We met at 9 o'clock today, and really all the way up to this point, it's been a very busy day for council. I have an announcement I want to make. The Council of the City of Roanoke is seeking applications for various vacancies on council-appointed authorities, boards, commissions, and committees. And as a council, we encourage citizens to come forward to serve, serve on those boards and commissions, because it's imperative that you help us as we go forward in making the decisions for this city. And so it's an easy process. All you need to do is access the city's website at www.roanokeva.gov to complete an online application, or you can call the clerk's office, and they will guide you and direct you through that process. So we invite any of you and all of our citizens, all those that are here and those that are watching us on RV TV, to take part in the city and be a part of that decision-making process. All right, with that, we're going to go to item number two, which is presentations and acknowledgements. And I'm going to ask the vice mayor if he would take the first presentation regarding Locked Guns Save Kids Day. Vice Mayor.
I want to introduce Catherine Cable, who is with lots of things, Croissants Not Guns Initiative, and was part of the effort originally to start Locked Guns Save Kids Day. And the family, the student that we're going to honor here today, and colleagues, Rita Joyce with MetUp, Mom. Who else is here?
Home.
Would you all like to stand up, too, just to be present as we're reading this together? All right. Whereas firearms are the leading cause of death for youth under 18 years old, whereas every gun in the hands of a child is somehow supplied by the actions of an adult, whereas 15% of American households with children have an unlocked loaded gun, whereas a gun in the home increases the risk of homicide threefold, whereas Secret Service and Washington Post investigations have found that between 74% to 89% of guns brought to school by students come from their home or the home of a relative or close friend, whereas a gun in the home increases a youth's risk of dying by suicide by fourfold, whereas 80% of youth firearm-related suicides take place in the home of a youth or relative, with a firearm belonging to either the youth or their caregiver in 90% of cases, whereas Roanoke City Public School student Camden Brown is forever eight because of an unlocked gun in a neighbor's house, and whereas May 6th is Camden Brown's birthday, on which we honor and remember Camden. Now therefore, I, Joseph Al Cobb, Vice Mayor on behalf of Sherman P. Lee, Senior Mayor of the City of Roanoke, encourage every adult in Roanoke City to do their part to lock up guns and ammunition so they are inaccessible to naturally curious and often impulsive children and teens, and do hereby proclaim May 6th Locked Guns Save Kids Day in honor and in memory and in celebration of Camden Brown's birthday.
I was going to say, before you let them go, if you could just get a picture. I didn't know if you all were done or not. I want to make sure we got this picture for communications.
I want to say a few words before you leave, too.
Press the mic. Okay, okay, I just wanted to... Okay, now we got everybody in. Okay, there we are. One, two, three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Let me say before you all leave, thank you all, and I thank the vice mayor and Catherine and others, and Rita, and all of you all for your work that you've done. Let me say, we're just not going through the motions and recognizing this. Parents, parents, guardians, grandparents, if you've got guns in the house, lock them up. That's why we're giving this to you. Lock them up, because you see, leaving guns around, you see what happens. So I want to emphasize that to you. Lock those guns up. Not only you all here, I'm going on a TV audience. Lock those guns up, because it's so tragic that things like this does not have to happen. And that's why this council and the Gun Violence Commission and others work so hard to make sure our children are safe. And you see it all across the country. And these guns are out here, there are guns everywhere. That's one thing I want to do, is get rid of some of these illegal guns, because many of them are illegal, and we're working on that. So I want to just let folks know if they got some illegal guns in their back pocket, we're coming for them. We're coming for them. All right, thank you. That's all I have to say.
In addition, I'd like to acknowledge Kelly Sandridge and Mark Cathy, and I believe the government... Could you guys stand up, please? Thank you. And I believe the government relations person, also Mr. Seibert is here. I hope I said his name correctly. This is from Roanoke City Public Schools, and they will be sending out a robot text closer to Camden's birthday that will be about how you can get gun locks at Roanoke City Public Schools, the front office of every single public school. And we're so grateful for them for sending out this public information robot text. It's incredibly powerful, very informational, and this is how public health happens, folks. Little pushes here and there and making, making the right decision easy. So that's what we're pushing here, and we so appreciate our partners at Roanoke City Public Schools. And I would also like to acknowledge Camden's mom. So, Denisha Jackson has been a powerful and fearless effort to tell people that gun locks are the way to save lives. So, thank you.
All right. And anybody you want to bring with you, please. We have a proclamation that we want to present, declaring May 1st through the 7th as Resilience Week. And I have a proclamation that I'd like to read, and so I will share that with you, and then I'll let... Christine, you have some words afterwards, all right? Okay, and you can have something else. Resilience Week, whereas the City of Roanoke recognizes that a strong society depends on supporting the development of strong brain architecture, health, and well-being of children to create a foundation for lifelong productivity and responsible citizenship, whereas adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, are stressful or traumatic experiences such as household violence, substance abuse, neglect, divorce, incarceration of a parent, or sexual slash physical assault that can disrupt the safe, stable, and nurturing environment children need to thrive. ACEs can cause toxic stress, which can negatively affect brain development and lead to a lifetime of physical, mental, economic, educational, and social challenges, whereas ACEs have been linked to public health problems such as obesity, addiction, hypertension, mental illness, and shortened life expectancy, whereas trauma-informed care is not a therapy or intervention, but a principle-based culture change process aimed at shifting a system of communities' philosophy, policies, programs, and practices to be more empathetic and focused on promoting resiliency, which is an individual or community's ability to bounce forward from adversity. And whereas the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network and the Resiliency Collective are initiatives of community stakeholders dedicated to developing a community-wide effort to end childhood trauma by building awareness around childhood trauma, resilience in the aftermath of trauma, and resilience among all citizens. Now therefore, I, Sherman P. Lee, Senior Mayor of the City of Roanoke, encourage citizens to become informed, promote prevention, healing, and resiliency in children and adults to build a stronger and healthier Roanoke. And we do hereby proclaim the week of May 1st through the 7th throughout this great seven-time All-American city as Resilience Week. And I'm going to present this now to Christine.
Thank you, Mayor Lee.
You've got to get one for us.
Oh, absolutely. Our pleasure. One, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
All yours.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Lee, council members. Thank you very much for working with our organizations in partnership with the City of Roanoke to declare this Resilience Week. We will be presenting a little bit more about our organizations in Resilience Week later on in the agenda today. So I will save some of those talking points for then. I am here with Decca Knight, who is the coordinator of Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network, and she and I are going to be co-presenting. But we thank you all for this, and we appreciate this partnership, and together we will make a more resilient community.
Sure. Anybody on council have any comments or thoughts? Sharon, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to say?
I'll say stuff later. I've got a lot to say later.
We have a whole presentation coming up. Thank you all.
Thank you. matters. Now, city council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. And I'll ask the clerk if she would... Do we have any speakers signed up?
Yes, we do.
Okay, would you call them in order?
Sure, I will. Our first speaker is Kenneth MacLeod.
Hi, Mayor Lee, members of city council. My name is Ken MacLeod, and I live in Wasina. I'm speaking to you today as board chair for Pedal Safe Roanoke, a volunteer-led nonprofit started last year to promote Roanoke as a livable community by improving the safety, convenience, and acceptance of cycling for all people. May is National Bike Month, first celebrated in 1956 to showcase the many benefits of bicycling and encourage people to ride. In Roanoke, there are many activities this Bike Month, and I want to let you know about some of them. On this Wednesday, May 3rd, Highland Park Elementary will celebrate Bike to School Day. Groups of children and their parents will gather to bike along the Roanoke River Greenway and over the soon-to-be-replaced Wasina Bridge. On Saturday, May 6th, Pedal Safe Roanoke will host a bike rodeo at the Melrose Library parking lot. A bike rodeo is a bicycle skills event for children, and we will be distributing helmets and other safety equipment to children as part of the event. The event will go from 11:00 to 2:00, and there will be a fire truck on site from 11:00 to noon. Next Monday, May 8th, Pedal Safe Roanoke will host a public meeting with Virginia Tech Professor Ralph Bueller. Professor Bueller is internationally known for his scholarship on bicycling, and his most recent book, Cycling for Sustainable Cities, shows how to make city cycling safe, practical, and convenient for all ages and abilities. This event will be held at the Virginia Tech Carillion Riverside Building 2 Auditorium from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. On Friday, May 19th, Pedal Safe Roanoke and Ride Solutions will host Bike to Work Day events. We hope to have at least three stations located throughout the community near downtown where people can get tasty treats on their ride to work. On Wednesday, May 24th and Thursday, May 25th, the Virginia Pass Program, standing for prioritizing active transportation health and safety, will conduct a road safety assessment centered around the new community center coming to northwest Roanoke and the existing Goodwill Jobs campus. I know that there are also events from many bike shops, businesses, and other community organizations. I hope that each of you is able to attend a bike-related event during Bike Month and at least get on your bike for a ride. I also want to give you a copy of some quick fixes that members of Pedal Safe Roanoke have identified for bicycle and pedestrian safety issues in this city. The quick fixes that we identified are projects that we hope are low-cost and high-impact. We want to work with the city to see improvements in these areas, and I hope to hear from members of city council, mayor, city manager, and city staff about how we can work together on these projects. I hope that you are all able to enjoy Bike Month this May. Biking is fun, healthy, sustainable, and practical, and May is the month that we celebrate that. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Warren Hargis.
I appreciate the opportunity to be able to address council, Mayor. I guess it's best said, very quick, that I was, have been apprised of my real estate reassessment. And I've been kind of taken aback as to the percentage of increase that I've experienced over these past two years. It's safe to say that in the 31 years that I've lived in my home, these past two years have been greater than the 29 years previously. While I understand the necessity for increasing the spending that's necessary for the city and all of the functions that you serve, everything that I know that you're responsible for, and I know the responsibilities are great. I've lived here actually since I graduated from college in 1975, and I worked for the company that was, the media company that was responsible for putting Noel Taylor in office. So while I haven't been attending the way that I possibly should, the council meetings and finding out everything that's necessary, I promise you, I'm going to change that. Because when the amounts of money that we're talking about, especially for citizens that are like myself, I'm not going to use senior because I think that has a tendency to be a little degrading where we're going along. I don't think we're necessarily that old. It's just that we've been, we've had a little more experience in aging. And I think that possibly rethinking some of the basis for these assessments is necessary because it's safe to say that we have to do quite a bit more planning as we grow older about where all of the money comes from and where all of the money goes to. And it kind of limits you when you realize that these bills, including this one, are coming up, and you have to now prioritize everything in your life in order to be able to make sure that you fulfill your obligations, which I don't mind fulfilling. I just think that it's a possibility that this one needs to be thought of again because it really takes me aback as to the percentage of increase that I've seen, and I wonder if this is going to be a trend for the future as to what I'm paying. In essence, I will let you know that I am now paying my mortgage again. And as a result, over the next years, I'll be, you know, paying the city of Roanoke for my home, just like I paid the bank for my home. I appreciate the time that you've given me, and I hope that maybe these words will be taken into consideration as you folks go forward, thinking about the money and where it comes from and who's paying it, and are concerned about that with the city. So I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Owen McGuire, followed by Frida Cathcart.
Thank you, members of council, listening to me today. My name is Owen McGuire. I'm the current president of the Grandin Court Neighborhood Association. Once again, thank you for this opportunity to invite you and the public to our neighborhood's annual celebration for Neighborhood Month. We will be having our annual plant exchange on May 18th at the Grandin Court Recreation Center on Barnum Road at 7:00. It's just a great place for people to come, bring plants, and exchange them with other members of the community. Cameron Terry will be there. She'll be giving a presentation on amending soil and have vegetable starts for sale to support the Urban Lick Run Farm, which is located on 10th Street. Frida Cathcart started this tradition over a decade ago. I also want to acknowledge what a good neighbor Frida is. There's not much that we agree on politically, but we both care about each other's families and our community. That's the good thing about being involved with the neighborhood, supporting each other as we deal with various challenges and opportunities, like public safety issues like speeding, broken sidewalks, and so forth. Also sharing our extra plants and seeds with each other to spread the beauty throughout the neighborhood. Frida has fulfilled two six-year terms as our neighborhood president. I appreciate her support in my first term as a neighborhood president. She has spent countless hours volunteering to help our neighbors in our neighborhood, problem-solving, and working to build consensus. I'm concerned that some important information wasn't given to you before you signed your contract on the house at Fishburne Park. It didn't make sense when someone on council said it was too bad that the neighborhood hadn't stepped up. This information wasn't included in your timeline for your consideration when you voted to extend the contract in March. In December of 2020, there was a correspondence between Frida, who was then the president of the Neighborhood Association, and a contractor, and the city manager. It was about fixing up the house for free in Fishburne Park. And Frida asked the city manager why the house hadn't been removed from sale as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. The city manager's last email ended with this statement, quote, "The council has not sought additional proposals for the use or transfer of the ownership of the property. I will however present the information you have to council for their response on any further instructions that they may wish to provide. Once I have council's response, I or someone from my office will follow up with you." Frida and the contractor didn't receive a follow-up from the city manager or someone from his department. There wasn't a notice on the council's agenda that it was going to be discussed. Plus, the manager never sent a letter in response to three letters of recommendation from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. Two of the letters recommended removing the house from the sale, so Frida and the contractor could work together to fix it up with the Parks and Rec Department. Finally, you mentioned in March about being fair to the Van Blarecoms. But your decision to sign a contract against recommendations from your own citizen advisory board isn't fair to the people who enjoy the park or our neighborhood. All of us deserve a response, especially when two experienced and generous developers are willing to volunteer and fix up a historic building for the benefit of all. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the blessings of living in Roanoke is living in wonderful neighborhoods and getting to know each other better, and I really appreciate having a neighbor like Owen and having the opportunity to work together. This is Neighborhood Month, but it's also the month that Mother's Day falls on. And I wanted to take a few words today and share with you. One of my inspirations and people that has provided a great example to follow, which is my mom. My mom was a community volunteer, and it was just normal in my family to help her. I mean, that's just what she did. I didn't know there was anything else but that. She started the Red Cross Nurses Aid Program at our local hospital. She was the chair of the County American Red Cross. She started our church's Sunday School for the children and a youth group. She was an EMT and captain of the ambulance corps, and she was an instructor for CPR and advanced first aid. She was president of the garden club, and she served for 15 years on the zoning board, for five years as its chair. She was, when they created the Citizen of the Year Award in the town of Tuxedo, she was the second recipient of it. So I'm really blessed to still have my mom with me. She's 86 years old. She still drives from South Carolina to New York. She is a very wonderful, wise woman. And recently, I had the opportunity to talk to her about the zoning and what was happening with Fishburne Park, and she was sharing with me her experiences on the zoning board. She said that when, her five years she was the chair of the zoning board, and during that time, they had less lawsuits than they had before. And she said the reason why was because she did the research to see what was going on, talked to people, especially neighbors that might potentially be impacted, and she was always very cautious of setting precedents. She said, "You got to watch out because they'll come and they'll want to just do one thing this one time, but later they'll use that as an excuse to do it again." And so she was always very cautious about that, and it really paid off. So I just wanted to take a few words today to sing my mother's praises and to give thanks for her example, and maybe to explain a little bit about why I do what I do and where I go. So thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
The next two speakers, Joseph Ko and Bill Tanger, and they will be the last speakers.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, city council. I have a question about property damage. I live in, off of Melrose in the northwest area. Not for sure I'm not from here. And just a couple of weeks ago, I called the city to ask them about how you go about stopping cars from speeding down the street because I stay on the expressway. And they told me that they were sent someone out there, which they never made it. And just last week, Monday, I stopped the police up on top of the hill and asked them about how do you go about stopping them from speeding down this street because we have elderly people and we have kids playing. Not more than two minutes later, police did a high-speed chase through the neighborhood. Now, I don't know your policy, but I'm quite sure they could have called it off. My property got damaged because police chasing some guy down the street. He decided he wanted to turn and run right into my van. But yet, I get hollered at because the police couldn't catch the dude. Now, that just don't make no sense, that I get hollered at. Now, my property is damaged, but my insurance goes up because I have to use my insurance to get my thing fixed. So my question would be, y'all, why are police not held accountable for their action? Now, if I take one of y'all and ride with me, if I go in that store and I rob that store, will we both get that charge? Now, why have a police chase a car down the street and they damaged somebody else's property? Why that policeman don't be held accountable for his action, which he could have called it off? I've never seen, I'm from Memphis, I've never seen nobody do a high-speed chase in the neighborhood without calling it off. I asked for the supervisor, he hollered at you call the supervisor, no problem, you eventually going to call him. But yet, all alone, it wasn't called off, and I think they should have called that off. Life is more important than trying to catch some guy speeding down the street. We have elderly people, we have kids out there playing. I got missed by three steps. I grabbed my garbage, made three steps, they was doing 80 miles an hour down through that neighborhood, and that is wrong. And nobody can't tell me why they didn't call that search off. So I would just still would like to know why they never called that speed, that high-speed chase off. They wouldn't have did it in the vice president neighborhood, they wouldn't have did it in the mayor neighborhood. So why they do it over there? I'm listening.
Well, let me just say, if you're finished.
I'm good, I'm good. You're good.
You almost in my neighborhood right there. I live in northwest, off of, well, I live in northwest. But let me ask you something because I want to follow you, the scenario you gave. There was a high-speed chase down your street.
Right down the street.
And what's your street?
Forest Park.
Forest Park.
I stay on the corner, Palmer, yeah, Palmer and Forest Park.
All right. And the police, who hit your car? You had a car that was hit.
Yeah, my van was just sitting there soaking up the sun. It wasn't bothering nobody. It just ran over there and hit my van.
Who did it? The police officer?
No, the guy the police was chasing.
Okay.
But my thing would have been, why the police never called that? I don't even think it was granted, but I don't see why they just didn't call it off because that was just too big of a risk there.
Did you get a call from the police or somebody talk to you?
Not a call.
Nobody talk to you at all?
Not a soul. They tell me, only thing they told me was it wasn't the city fault, city not responsible for it. City fault? You chased them. If you chased them down the street, why they don't hold them accountable for their action? At some point in time, I don't care they think the police is gone, they can think it all they want. They got to be held accountable for their mistakes. It's nobody perfect. But if you go chase somebody down the street and they tear up somebody else's property, that person don't have, shouldn't have to come out of his pocket to pay for his property that the police chased somebody down there to destroy.
And nobody mentioned to you the individual that hit your car? His insurance wasn't involved? They didn't walk you through this process?
No, they gave me, when they finally gave me the paper, I called, it was a rental car he was in. And rental car going through the procedure, police, well, we're not responsible for it, so it's nothing we can do. I talked to this lady, they said, supposed to be doing the city council, the city construction thing, whatever they want to call it. She said, "Nothing the city..." She says, "Nothing the city can do about it," because the city wasn't responsible. How can the city not be responsi--? I think they has a, well, that was a playing car, but rental police come over there, but they didn't do nothing.
Well, I'm disappointed that a lot of things weren't made clear to you in the policy. There is a policy that governs that when people, government officials are in the line doing their work. There's a policy, and I'd like for you to talk with our city manager, his staff, to explain that to you. And then regardless of that, if the rental car company, they're covered, somebody's covered with insurance, I think, I think you need to really look at that, because--
Oh, yeah, and I need my van fixed. And then I come down here to tell them about my tags, because they bent my tags. Oh, they want to charge me $10 for my tags, and I didn't even do nothing. My car was just sitting in the yard, mowing his own business, and they want to hit me up for $10.
I can understand your frustration, I've been there.
So will they waive that $10?
Well, that's a good question.
And it is an antique van, though. Let's not make, let's not pass that off. So I think somebody need to waive my little $10, I can get some new tags. And I think, if they don't, if the city don't fix, they need to, I would think they would look into their policy of high-speed chase.
Okay. I'd ask you to talk to our city manager, that he can refer you to somebody to give us some information.
All right, no problem.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Mayor, that was the last speaker. One more, one more, I'm sorry. Mr. Tanger, go ahead.
Bill Tanger. Bill, we got you.
Surely the last speaker, right? Because the last speaker gets twice as much time. That's not right.
It used to be that way, now it isn't.
I think Bob told me that. So I'm here, as you know, I would imagine representing a new organization, the Williamson Road Community Forum. We represent over 60 businesses and organizations, most of which are in the area that was under target for, quote, improvement, unquote. So the time has come. I have met with every one of you on City Council individually, sometimes with another group, explained our program, our plan, our backing, and all those, I'm not going to go into any of that. I will say that we're now at the point where we feel we've talked enough and explained enough, and we'd like to see City Council vote on something. I think you've seen the recent TV coverage, and then we had some, we ran a full-page ad in the Roanoke Times, and then there was some newspaper coverage. Then we've tried to cover every base we can before we come to you. And so we're, and by the way, my co-chair has had a family thing come up, he couldn't be here, but, but I think that we think the time has come to, for City Council, to address this and take a vote on it. And the vote should be to, to two things. One, put the so-called pipeline project on ice, and two, start over. When we, when I and Clay met with all of you, we laid things out, and we did not have a funding source. And then the heavens opened up and a grant floated down from the Department of Transportation. That DOT grant, to me, is like the almost perfect grant, covering the perfect subjects, which is to do some research, have some experts come in and do some modeling, but above all, to reach, try to reach out to the community and get a consensus on any project going forward. So I don't see any, any way, anything's blocking the path to City Council to vote on this and start the process for an organization that gets put together that will address the Williamson Road issues, because now you have a little funding. It's about $300,000 ballpark. We have a new organization, it includes not just businesses, but residents and other clubs and organizations. And so that's the kind of organization that's needed out there. You know, the business and the residential communities are intertwined, for sure. I'm starting on my second two minutes, right? Just kidding. And so I encourage you to do that. I think the timing is serendipitous. My word for the day. Any questions before I depart?
May I have a question?
Thank you.
Mr. Tanger, could you provide us with a list of the 60 businesses that you represent?
Yes, and I have, I think, and hand out, I had, there's a petition, we have, I have a copy here that's partial, because the second page is out being circulated, but this one has about 30 on it. But I can tell you that they're all, most of the bigger ones, especially Northwest Hardware and Burgland and New Yorker, all the, almost all the, every, let me put it this way, almost every business that we have gone to has signed up in our support against that pipeline. Never mind, I don't want to--
Just when you're ready, I would like to see it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Council? Thank you, Bill.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to some action.
That's all of it?
That's all the speakers.
All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion.
So move. Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the--
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the consent agenda is approved. We're now down to item six, which is petitions and communications. A presentation of the Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Proposed Fiscal Year 2023, 2024 Budget. Scott Ramsberg, Cable Access Director, spokesperson, as a sponsor by the city manager, and there is a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the recommendation of the Roanoke Valley Regional Cable Television Committee to approve the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 for the operation of the regional government and educational access station, Roanoke Valley Television, RV TV Channel 3, and for the city to provide partial funding.
Thank you. Scott? Thank you, sir.
It's my pleasure to return to council, Mayor Lee, Vice Mayor Cobb, members of council, to present the 2023-24 operating budget, which I believe you all have included in your packets. Two months ago, I provided an overview of how our five-person staff functions as an extension of your communications, community engagement efforts, generating original civic and educational media content, such as video graphic design, animation, podcasts, and photography. And of course, we also distribute that via platforms like social media, streaming on rvtv.org, and outlets such as Cox Cable 3, Comcast Channel 3, and Chantel Globe Fiber Channel 7. Last year, RV TV facilitated the recording, directing, and live-streaming of 37 Roanoke City Council meetings or briefings, 10 livestreamed public meetings or events, and produced 140 unique media projects for the city of Roanoke or Roanoke City Public Schools, including thousands of minutes of produced media. A few highlights include monthly editions of NOC News, Biz Roanoke, as well as special projects like ARPA funding updates, ribbon-cutting events, stormwater project updates, recruiting PSAs, Parks and Recreation event coverage, Transportation Division communications, Arts Council features, police and sheriff community outreach, and public school superintendent communications, just to name a few. As you know, we're governed by the Regional Cable Television Committee, of which your representatives are Councilman Peter Volison, Community Engagement Specialist Carol Corbin, City School Communications Director Kelly Sandridge, and Citizen Appointee Sean Nolan. The budget shared between the three sponsoring localities by a population defined by the U.S., by the proportion of the population as defined by the recent U.S. Census data. Our operating request from the city of Roanoke for this upcoming fiscal year is $297,033, which is 50.58% out of the total annual operating budget of $587,254. It is the recommendation of the Regional Cable Television Committee to appropriate funding for the fiscal year 2324 operating budget for RV TV. I would be happy to receive any comments or answer any questions.
Ms. White Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott, I just want to say, with your limited staff and the work that you all do and the communications that you've done over the last year have been really amazing. We, you know, that was one of the things that we talked about when I first became a member of council, is how do we communicate to our residents and get information out there? And I would just want to say, thank you, you guys have really stepped up your game. You see everything that we're doing, it's getting out there, and I just want to commend you and your staff for all the hard work that you do with that limited staff, for sure.
Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Your Honor.
I echo your statement.
I echo what she said. Well spoken.
Thank you so much, Scott.
Appreciate that.
Mayor Lee, we need to call the roll on that.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volison.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Ah, and the resolution passes, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, our next presentation is from the Roanoke Cultural Endowment. We'll have an update, and Shaleen Power, executive, director, spokesperson, sponsored by Vice Mayor Cobb and Councilmember White Boyd. Hello, Shaleen.
It's a piece of art. I wore this at the Daisy Art Parade. And I looked at it sitting on my dining room table this morning, and I said, huh, I have a feeling that this group, out of all humans I know, would appreciate the Roanoke star that was handmade. So I brought it. Good afternoon, Mayor Lee, members of City Council. It is a pleasure to be here today to present an update on the Roanoke Cultural Endowment to you and also to the citizens of Roanoke. We have an important partnership. The Cultural Endowment will one day provide a new stream of perpetual operational funding for arts and cultural organizations in Roanoke. And having the city as our partner is evidence of your commitment to elevate and strengthen the cultural infrastructure in Roanoke. So thank you. Today, I will be covering the following topics, starting with a fundraising update, highlighting our annual report, and then reporting to you on ARPA-funded projects that we have facilitated. I am pleased to relay, we have raised just over $5 million to date, of which the city of Roanoke has very meaningfully contributed $1.45 million. In addition to the aforementioned $5 million in outright gifts and pledges received, we have also secured multiple legacy gifts, one in the amount of $5 million. In the fall, in the fall of 2022, we partnered with students in Virginia Tech's Arts Leadership Graduate Program. Students in the Arts Marketing Course worked to create our inaugural annual report, which we're excited to say will be released later this month. And I'd like to acknowledge Ashley Pope, who is here today. Ashley, please stand. Ashley is, is an MFA Arts Leadership Candidate at Virginia Tech, and she's been an intern at the endowment this past academic year. So thank you, Ashley, for all of your work. As we work, as we work alongside the city to build our $20 million endowment fund, the RCE has also maintained a commitment to facilitating short-term impact projects in partnership with the city to advance the sector collectively. In 2022, we grant, we were granted $50,000 from the city of Roanoke through the American Rescue Plan Act to facilitate two such collaborative initiatives, and I'm excited to share details on each of these programs with you. First is the Adaptive Leadership Workshop Series. Title, "Learning from the Emerging Future," was an initiative funded by the ARPA grant and designed specifically for leaders of arts organizations in Roanoke. The program brought 40 local arts leaders together to focus on approaches and practices necessary to advance their primary objectives in ways that addressed adaptive challenges during times of sustained uncertainty, a timely topic, a timely topic as we continue to emerge from the pandemic into the new normal. Three onsite intensives took place at the Roanoke Higher Education Center between September and November of 2022. Here are a few photos taken during the workshop series, so you can get an idea of what was involved. John McCann, president of the national consulting firm Partners in Performance, and his team facilitated the series. Mr. McCann is familiar with our arts ecosystem, having previously assisted with Roanoke's arts and cultural plan back in 2010. And the ARPA grant money is continuing to have significant and concrete impact beyond the Adaptive Leadership Series, as at least one idea that emerged from those sessions is now well on its way in the form of a citywide arts marketing task force. And I'm proud to say, those initial arts marketing meetings were facilitated by one of the endowment board members and volunteers. The ARPA funding was also used to produce six episodes of Buzz, a Roanoke-based public television show that features nonprofit organizations receiving pro bono marketing resources. This six-part Buzz series, Arts Connect Roanoke, explores the many ways the arts connect our community. The series highlights the role of the arts as a social connector, in health and well-being, as a high-quality education, in fostering a strong economy, and an affecting change in our community. Here are a few highlights from each episode to date that I'd like to share with you. Two episodes of Buzz were devoted to Roanoke Arts Pop in 2022, an event that was, is held at the Taubman Museum. This annual weekend-long event showcases over 30 arts organizations in our area. Episode one served as a preview and was helpful in marketing the event to the general public. Episode two showcased the weekend event and provided a comprehensive look at what Roanoke Arts Pop has to offer. For the marketing component of this episode, Lead Point Digital created a social media campaign, which also gave additional exposure to participating organizations. The next, the next Buzz episode was produced in partnership with Carillion Clinic, and this focused on the healing arts. It featured Carillion's Dr. Robert L.A. Keeley's Healing Arts Program alongside other nonprofit arts groups working within this same space. It underscores what a powerful impact the arts can have on healthcare programs. This episode introduced the branding Arts Connect, created by Five Points Creative, as a statement that weaves the arts through all parts of our community. Arts Connect also became the title of this six-part Buzz series. The Buzz episode, Staying Connected Through the Arts in Roanoke City Public Schools, gave a glimpse into how the arts keep our students safe, connected, and involved in our schools and community. Access Advertising created a pamphlet that shows an overview of all fine arts courses city schools have to offer. This will allow schools-- This will allow school counselors to easily provide fine arts information to students during class registration. This new pamphlet will be introduced during the 2324 school year with the goal of increasing student enrollment in these elective opportunities. We had a celebratory watch party at the Grandin Theater, where over 150 attendees, primarily students and their families, came to the theater to walk the red carpet. They got their photo taken. They received a free book from Star City Reads, enjoyed free popcorn, and even took home an Oscar for their involvement in the episode. Our next, our, our next episode is in partnership with the city's Economic Development Department, and it explores the role the arts play in recruiting, building, and investing in economic projects, and it premieres on June 21st. And we will wrap up this six-part series in the fall with an episode highlighting the role the arts play in equity, inclusion, and social justice, and will highlight some of the important work being done through the city's Year of the Artist Initiative. So stay tuned for that. I believe that each of you do have an appreciation for the arts and their power to transform. The arts are an important economic engine. They contribute to the success and prosperity of our community, but they are more than just that. They also bring people together by creating shared experiences. They contribute to the quality of life for our residents while also making Virginia's Blue Ridge an exciting place for travelers to visit. The city has been the single largest donor to the endowment. Thank you for your commitment. We are grateful to work alongside the Roanoke Arts Commission and Doug Jackson, the city's Arts and Culture Coordinator, to advocate and to advance the role of the arts in our community. As the Roanoke Endowment moves toward, moves forward with unwavering dedication towards our $20 million goal, we can all remain inspired, knowing that we are building a framework of stability and financial sustainability for the arts community in Roanoke. Thank you for your dedication to our city and for your time today. This concludes my update, and I welcome any comments or questions that you might have.
Thank you, Shaleen. Question for members of council.
I'm sure Mr. Cobb does. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Powell, I just want to say thank you so much, and I echo that economic impact. I think sometimes that goes unnoticed, but certainly the economic impact is essential. And also the creativity that you guys have. Just the last Daisy Art Parade, I, you know, I filmed it, and I said, next year, I'm going to be in it. It was so much fun. So I just want to say, great job on getting the community involved in all of these arts projects. That's what makes it exciting, and that's how, that's what makes it work. So I just wanted to commend you all on that. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for everything that the endowment has done. I'm also been to several of these events that we talked about, with the, the leadership event. That was amazing to get a lot of Roanoke's cultural organizations together, kind of thinking as one, and having that, that marketing task force come out of that, I think, is a really big part of it. We always, you know, say when we're selling Roanoke that we have all these arts foundations, and now this is a better way to do that with one voice, that our arts community is really impactful and important here in the city. And hopefully will bring in more tourism and other things like that as well. I also went to the Buzz for Good at the Grandin Theater with the kids, and that was just amazing to see. At the end, they all got, they had these, like, fake Secret Service agents, and they all came out, and they were like, oh, because it was right, right around the Oscars, wasn't it? Yeah. And it was just great to see all their faces light up as they got their, their Oscars for being in it. So just wanted to commend you on all the great work that y'all are doing.
And you were in the parade.
Yeah, I was in the parade, yeah.
Shaleen, I want to thank you and the endowment. I, I'm particularly proud of the work you've been doing in between. Sometimes when you're trying to grow an endowment, it, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work in building relationships with donors. You described the legacy gift that you have, and who knows how long that took to secure? So donor fundraising often takes a very long time, and when you're trying to build an endowment of, of this magnitude that's going to have this perpetual operational support, it takes time to do that, but you've, you're making great progress. But I think those incremental things that you're doing to make sure the name of the Roanoke Cultural Endowment is in the community, and people are learning more about it and how they can be a part of it. And I would also advocate for citizens who just want to give something to the endowment. We sometimes think that endowments can only accept large gifts, and they, that's not true. Individual donors can sign up with you to, to give monthly gifts, or quarterly gifts, or annual gifts. So anyone can play a part in that to get us to the goal. So thank you all for everything you're doing.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Shaleen. We will receive that information and file. All right, up next is a presentation of the Roanoke Prevention Alliance, Resiliency Collective, and the Roanoke Valley Trauma-Informed Community Network information and initiatives. And we'll be asking Christine Gist, Prevention and Wellness Specialist, and this was sponsored by Vice Mayor Cobb and Councilmember Sanchez Jones. You all have at least 10 minutes.
Thank you. We have a presentation that Ms. Webb was helping us with to set up here.
It is, it's right here. You see it?
May 1. Right here.
Yes, ma'am.
I think that we've got it then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's put it in. Thank you. All right, well, thank you, councilmembers, again, for, for having us speak today. I'm Christine Gist, Director of the Roanoke Prevention Alliance and Facilitate the Resiliency Collective out of Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare, where I work in prevention and wellness. I'm here today with Decca Knight, and she's going to, to end the presentation, and I'll let her introduce herself then. A quick background. Roanoke Prevention Alliance has, is going on its 26th year with the mission to reduce youth substance use of alcohol, tobacco, cannabis, and now vaping. RPA serves as the backbone organization to the Resiliency Collective, which had its first meeting in May 2017. We partner with over 20 organizations with the shared agenda to build upon the resilience of youth, families, and communities in the city of Roanoke. And the Resiliency Collective believes that resilient people build stronger communities. I'm not going to read this whole slide, but I would like to point out that the RC, Resiliency Collective, has two toolkits for resilience trainings. And one is a community-based Be a Resilience Champion, and the other is a professional toolkit, The Path to Resilience. And these are the numbers of people that we've trained thus far. The Roanoke Prevention Alliance and the Resiliency Collective identified through the 2021 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, low percentages of middle school at 52.6% and high school at 43% aged youth that reported that they agree or strongly agree that they feel like they matter to people in their community. And knowing that youth feeling connected to their community is a strong protective factor, the Resiliency Collective decided to make this a focus for the next few years and increase those numbers. We applied for a behavioral health equity grant, and we received it. And it focused specifically on the importance of African-American Black youth feeling like they matter to their community. We know that the data is also clear that all youth, no matter their race, need to feel like they matter as well. The Resiliency Collective has every expectation to work on protective factors for all races, ethnicities, and marginalized groups as we move forward. We launched a campaign called I Matter. We were able to partner with some of our organizations, and I want to give special thanks to them at this time. YHQ, Youth Headquarters Goodwill, Roanoke Public Libraries, the Melrose and Main Library Branches, the Boys and Girls Club, Weston Center. And we were also able to partner with the Roanoke City Public Schools and roll out an activity I'm going to explain later. The success of our campaign was because of the input that we received from Roanoke City youth. They led this messaging, and they came up with 14 I Matter statements based on the focus group questions that we asked. We were able to develop those statements and then let the youth also vote on the ones that they wanted us to run the campaign. So they chose their top three favorites out of those 14. This was on a billboard at Peters Creek and Melrose in the fall of 2022. Show me I matter, be there for me. Show me I matter, take time and listen to me was at Melrose and Orange Avenue. And then Show me I matter, don't judge, get to know me was on Williamson Road. And we also ran another campaign in February, and we put these three ads on six different bus lines. So we will continue to, to build on the campaign. YHQ Youth and Melrose Library Youth participated in a photo shoot, and it went into some of those advertising platforms. And I'm hoping that we can get this to play for you. This was a social media campaign that ran. And let's see if it works. Nope. Hit something. All right, well, trust me, it's adorable, and all these youth are, are in it. You can go to the Roanoke Prevention Alliance Facebook page and find this ad. We will be running it again. It has the faces of all these, like, wonderful youth, you know, from those youth-serving organizations. And we had an enormous success with the outcomes of this social marketing campaign. Another aspect of that equity grant was we were able to provide large gold stars and really lean into that we are the Star City of the South. And we provided the stars and colors of the world, crayons and markers. And guidance counselors led the children in an activity. Some emphasized lessons around Bullying Prevention Month. Others focused on Red Ribbon Week. We, we were able to, you know, partner with the city's schools, and 2,482 students did a resilience and equity-building activity. Our RPA president is in the audience with us today, Ken Lyons. When he was in the schools viewing them, it's really, it was really moving to see what the, what the kids, you know, decide to highlight. And he emphasized that there is a story behind every star. The Equity and Resilience Building Project was implemented with the guidelines of who provides students with support, who is the trusted person they can go to if they need help with anything, if they need to confide in someone, who is that protective influence or factor in their life. And for many students, this was the first time thinking about it and identifying a person. Multiple staff at the seven elementary schools that we were able to work with pointed out to us that they were in the center of the star, the principal, the teachers, the coaches, other staff members, the guidance counselors. All family members were recognized as, as protective factors to support system in people's lives, but when they did not have that, they, they recognized, you know, the, the staff of the schools became those protective, supportive people that they can go to and that they can trust. I also want to point out that God and Jesus were on a lot of the stars, and we knew that faith is a protective factor as well. And these are just some of the, the beautiful images. I don't have all the schools because I'm trying to condense my presentation. We did get funding from the Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services to be able to roll this out in the other 10 elementary schools. So we will be able to catch up the other schools and be able to do this activity with them as well. And in mental health, we know that adverse childhood experiences negatively impact mental health and physical health across the lifespan. What Mayor Lee was reading earlier about the proclamation, those adverse childhood experiences cause toxic stress in people, and without having anything to alleviate that, that will just turn into negative health outcomes. So we lean into trying to share out more positive childhood experiences, future things that they can more influence to take that, that balance and to put it on the right side of things. So we were asked by the Youth Services, Youth Services Citizens Board Members Anita Price and Karen Pillis to share out our instructions so other after-school programs could participate also, and, and churches also could do this activity to help build those supports. This is a co-lab that we worked on together. I do have these magnets and also a list of 25 things you can do to build resilience. I'm going to be handing out to all of you all. And, and also, we have an activity tomorrow for Resilience Week. We have open to the public, free of charge, a screening of a documentary called Resilience. It begins at 6:00 PM, goes until 7:00, and then we have a Q and A with some notable people, including two of our also Roanoke Prevention Board members, Decca Knight, Antonio Stovall, our president over there, Ken Lyons. So thank you. At this point, I'm going to pass on the presentation to Decca Knight. Oh, I'm sorry, I have one more page. Can't let go of the mic. Very important page here. We are going to reapply for that behavioral health equity grant. And what we want to do moving forward is to make sure that we are including equity for all people of color. And we want to do a specific project and develop I Matter statement specifically for the LGBTQIA+ community. So we will take those focus group questions and go to the Diversity Center and other locations so that we can develop messaging specifically. Another thing that we are working to do in partnership is to have a healing-centered church conference that has resilience information, trauma-informed approaches, led by Black community leaders in the church community. So look out for those projects coming up. And Decca, here you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I always say that when you talk about trauma-informed care and resilience, it's like peanut butter and jelly. We got to go together, right? Because if you just talk about trauma-informed care and you don't talk about the resilience, it can be kind of overwhelming to hear. So I just want to talk for a minute about what the TICAN does. We call ourselves the TICAN, Trauma-Informed Community Network. But there's actually 30-plus TICANS across the state of Virginia. Most medium-sized and large-sized cities have a TICAN. And we are actually modeled after Richmond's TICAN, who came down in 2017 and helped us get started, helped us get started, along with Dr. Eric Vance from Corellian and also Judge Rogers. And so they were the first people who kind of spearheaded our efforts. And we joined all the other TICANS across the state that we collaborate with. You can see our mission up here on the screen. It's to provide education on trauma with a focus on recovery and resilience. And we recognize that traumatic experiences in the lives of individuals profoundly affect their developmental trajectories in the medical, psychological, educational, and social realms. And just like the Resiliency Collective, we partner with over 20 agencies here in the valley to push out this trauma-informed message and help others understand what it means to have a trauma-informed organization. Our main goal in having a trauma-informed organization is to resist re-traumatization. Many organizations unknowingly re-traumatize people who have been through tough things over and over again. And our mission is to help them understand what that looks like and understand how they can prevent that. And so we've been working collectively with these organizations since 2017 to get this message across. The Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, or SAMSA, which is a federal agency, outlines these as trauma-informed qualities. They actually have a very substantive briefing that we work from as our framework. And you can see those qualities here. All the work that we do is driven by those qualities. We have a number of committees that work in the community and have members from those different organizations on those committees. So we have our General Committee, which is like the steering committee. We have education, community awareness, law enforcement, and healthcare. We have individuals from those different, different parts of our city who help inform our work on a regular basis. The part that I'm really excited about is since 2021, we have actually trained 1,139 community members on trauma-informed care within two years, a little over two years. And those are members from all of those organizations and much, much more. So what we do with that information is then we give them kind of a talking point to go back to their organizations and become those trauma-informed champions. All of our trainings are free to the community. So we do our trauma basics trainings and a lot more. But you can see here some of our data. About 62% feel that after this workshop, they have improved knowledge to implement trauma-informed practices into their life and into their work. And that's what we're working on. And then you put that down with the four as well, about 28%. So here are some of the other trainings that we do for free. Again, we're doing multiple trainings a month. Anybody can come for free. And I encourage you to sign up for our newsletter because you'll get all that information about when we have trauma-informed trainings. And you can come to any of them and just see what we do. There is my information and you can join our social media as well to see all the stuff that we have coming up. I appreciate everybody giving us their time. And I also appreciate that many times in meetings here in our community, people say we're becoming a trauma-informed community. And that makes my heart happy because I've been trying to do that work for 10 years. So thank you all for listening. And thank you Christine and the Resiliency Collective for being our partners.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I will go to Ms. Sanchez Jones and then I'll end with Vice Mayor. Ms. Jones, you got any thoughts or questions?
I see that you had a Spanish trauma-informed classes.
Yes.
Where are those held at?
So we did a Train the Trainer for Casa Latina.
Okay.
And so we have individuals that have been trained in that Spanish language version. We translated it through an individual that works with us at TAP. And those individuals are beginning to spread that into the community. So my understanding is one of our trainers who went through our training is going to start doing that under a tree-planted counseling with the group that they do there. So that's going to be our first Spanish-language, trauma-informed basics presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bless you, Mayor.
Thank, thank you both. I appreciate this. And I alluded to this earlier today, but you know, we, we've intersected a lot with the work of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission and offering some of these trauma basics classes. But I think in addition to that, it's, we've also been looking at other ways we can fill gaps in terms of trauma, because there's the immediate trauma that happens when there's an incident, whether it's, you know, wherever it is and whatever level of trauma. And then there's the sustained effect of that and then the process for healing. And I love that we're growing this program in such a way that we can fill those gaps and meet those gaps. And then the, the challenge becomes how in relationships can we get to the people that are most directly impacted by trauma so that they feel comfortable talking about it? Because it's, depending on where you are in that, in that range of trauma, you may not be able to talk about it right now. But if you know about it and have access to it six months or nine months or a year from now.
Yes.
It's available. So thank you all for your work.
Thank you.
I just had one question.
Thanks again for, for everything that you're doing. And I was going to piggyback on something Vice Mayor said about working, you know, in tandem with the gun violence prevention. And in particular, an organization came to mind, Fed Up, who deal with women or, or families who have experienced that trauma. Have you all worked with them? I would love for you to work with them if you have.
Yes. So I think I, I know about Fed Up through the commission. And so I, that is a great idea. That's something that we need to do more of. Unfortunately, my work with the TICAN is only 10 hours a week. So, so I need a lot more of me to replicate myself.
To be able to do that.
Yeah. We were actually talking about that when we saw Rita here earlier, that I needed to introduce Christine to Rita as well so that we can do more of that work.
Oh, that sounds so good. That's the first thing that came to my mind, that she, that that organization, because of what they do and the services that they try to provide, they would certainly benefit from, from some of your training.
Hundred percent.
And yeah, we're going to be working. Jeffrey Powell has attended some of our Resiliency Collective meetings and he's asked specifically for a, a, something for 13 to 17-year-olds to do, Melrose Library Group. So we want to do a specific training for them. Be a resilience champion is age-appropriate. And so we will work on sharing that out and building up a curriculum and, and obviously, you know, working together. Like Decca said, our, our trainings are very complimentary. We want people to be trauma-informed and also have the skill sets and the tools to practice resilience and apply that when, when needed most.
I know. Too bad you can't multiply yourself.
Multiply ourselves. I don't know if you want more of me in particular, but okay.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all. Any other questions?
Well, thank you both again.
Thank you for support.
Thank you for this opportunity.
We will receive and file this information. Island number seven on the agenda is reports of city officers and comments of a city manager. And I will call on our city manager to introduce up to us our next briefing.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and Council. As was mentioned in the joint meeting of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission and the council earlier today, there was a request for the commission to share with you in this briefing, an update on the awareness campaign that they had been working forward. And that's the, the purpose of that briefing. And I don't know, Joe, if you, I'll turn it over to the Vice Mayor and then he can introduce the, the speakers for it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to introduce Mike Bento, who is with Engage Strategies, and Bruce Bryan, who is with Five Points Creative. I think Mike's going to take the lead on giving the presentation as Bruce is looking shocked. No, he's been very involved in this. So we, through an RFP process, contracted with Engage Strategies and they have been, they've just done excellent work in not only analyzing what our realities are in the community, but connecting with Bruce and his team, kind of on the ground here, meeting a lot of people, attending all of our meetings, and have, have a really thorough presentation that they'd like to give today. In addition to introducing the two of them, I also want to acknowledge Chris Turnbull, who many of you know with Corellian Clinic. I can't remember what your official title is at Corellian, but you do all things PR and marketing and communications. But Chris was instrumental in helping us write the RFP and was part of the review process and has been part of the marketing team to bring this to fruition. And then Eric Anderson, is Eric still back there, is with Ronan City Public Schools. He's also a member of the commission and, as is Decca and Elliot and Nicole, who are able to be here this afternoon. Mike, take it away.
Great. Thank you, Joe. Mayor Lee, members of the council, I'm delighted to be with you and share the work, where we've come in this work. I'm going to do a brief overview of the research that got us to this place, our recommendations, the campaign we're proposing, a media plan, a budget, and then leave time for conversation. And I am confident we'll have a robust conversation. So we built on the research that you had done. There'd been an excellent community assessment done by the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, and that formed the foundation for our work. We then did a scan of best practices nationwide, other similar-sized communities, what they were doing. We did a series of in-depth interviews with community leaders here, and then two focus groups, one with parents, one with young people, that were very informative. In the appendix to this, I've shared more of the detail on that research. But to summarize, what we saw, what we heard in the best practices was, at the centerpiece of the Centers for Disease Control's violence prevention framework is the idea of connecting young people to programs. That is one of the strongest determining factors in preventing violence. Roanoke has an incredibly robust offering of programs. You have built, you've done the work. You have built this comprehensive set of programs. At the same time, we heard that parents and caregivers are largely unaware of those programs of the sort of support available to them. So that delta between what you have and what parents and caregivers want is the real opportunity in front of us. Our goal, and our goal from the beginning, was to reduce overall gun violence in Roanoke. From a marketing perspective, which is where we come at this, our goal is to get more parents and caregivers both aware of and engaged in local programs. And to do that, we need to build trust in these programs. For some people in this community, there's a hesitance to come forward, a hesitance to identify their own needs, a hesitance to be seen by the system. So we need to build trust in the programs that are available and build support across the community for this public health approach in partnership with law enforcement to reducing gun violence. Our primary audiences are parents and the caregivers of young people and the influencers, the coaches, the barbers, all of those extended members of the community who routinely come in contact with young people. What we want in terms of an outcome, we want parents, caregivers, influences aware of the support that's available to them and confident that the city and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission sees them and is taking action. We heard from parents this sense of, I'm out here alone and I want to know somebody's got my back. And the reality is, you do, in the work you've done in building programs. We need to convey that. We want those engaged caregivers to come away saying, I'm not alone. We also want disengaged caregivers. And we heard this repeatedly, that there are parents and caregivers who find it safer to try and fly under the radar, to not engage, to not ask for help, to not risk stigma in expressing their needs. We want to tempt them and we want to offer them programs where at a low, low impact, they can begin to try something. I'll give this a try. I'll try going to the food bank. I'll try one of the clothing drives and begin to draw them into the network of services deeper and deeper over time. So the campaign, we want to, the strategy that we want to lead with is this drive participation to specific programs currently available, not building more, focus on the wealth of programs that's available, and use that to strengthen family and community resilience. It was great timing to have us follow the previous presentation because these things really fit together well. The concept for driving is called What's Good, Roanoke. Promote the services to help Roanoke families and young people thrive. Use real examples to build their trust. Don't give people lists or catalogs. Tell stories about real people in this community. And leverage those low-barrier, low-commitment services to connect people who are disengaged. Make it easy for them to begin to connect and then we'll draw them along. A website with an access to the core services. We need a central place where people can find things and not, this is one of those situations where too much information is our enemy. You bury people in information, they turn off. But we can use the web, we can use social media to highlight things, one or two or three things happening this week that apply to your family. Not the whole catalog. Don't make people do a research project. Highlight things. And that's the What's Good This Week, three or four opportunities chosen every week. And then promote that citywide with a concentration in the most highly impacted neighborhoods, using advertising, social media, and some of the grassroots techniques, getting granular. We want posters in laundry rooms in public housing. All the digital stuff is fun, but sometimes you need to go back to the old-fashioned. There is nothing as effective as an ad in a church bulletin. And all of this communication needs to be branded, City of Roanoke and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. And this is counter to what's normally recommended. What we see nationwide in gun violence prevention efforts is that the government is often not the most credible messenger. But in this community, and particularly to parents and caregivers, they need to see the government taking action. They need it to be branded, the city and the Gun Violence Prevention Commission. So here's examples of what it would look like. Two simple ads, What's Good, Roanoke? We are. Here's one good thing. Every week, every week year-round, Leap Mobile Market arrives at neighborhoods across Roanoke to feed residents hungry for healthy food. We have lots of free programs and services in Roanoke to give kids and families the support they need to succeed. To find out more, go here. Simple message. And a story with a picture that in a setting folks recognize, a single story. Another example, What's Good, Roanoke? We are. Here's one good thing. The Humble Hustle Coat Drive, now in its fifth year, provided 200 Roanoke youngsters with warm winter coats. Concrete examples of people they trust. And that gets translated to a website, similar design. On the left, you see the three good things this week. And I have to tell you, as we were putting the campaign together, the easiest part of this work was coming up with the good things. It's not hard to come up with a list. This was three, on a particular week, we were doing this, the mobile market, Rise 540 at the YMCA, the TAP Clothing Closet. The list goes on and on. And it's the danger of burying people in the list, and it's why we want to highlight a couple of things every week. Examples of the ways we'd get this out there, door hangers and coffee cups and laundry posters, signs on buses, and go, I want to go back to the outcome. We want engaged caregivers to feel, I'm not alone, we're not alone. And we want folks who are disengaged from services to say, I'll give this a try. I'm going to summarize the media plan we're recommending. Bruce and the Five Points Team have done a ton of work and there's a lot of detail in here about the why and some of the recommendations they're making. But for a reasonable cost, you can put together a comprehensive campaign, including TV and both cable and broadcast here in very targeted areas. And you can see, we'll share this with you, some of the shows and the networks that we can, that we will buy on to get to folks. A very, this is a relatively inexpensive media market, happily. Radio is key, and you've got a good radio selection. Digital, including digital out-of-home, video ads that people see at the gas station, and geofencing video ads. It's a little unsettling how narrowly we can target advertising to people. I was happy to say in my Instagram feed last night, Corellian had found me and was offering me healthcare services when I checked into the hotel. So that's how it's done. Social media, bus wraps, all of this adding up, the media buy, producing materials, the website, and support to drive the social media, about $162,000. There's adjustments we can make there, but that's an order of magnitude. What I want to end with is a quote from the Surgeon General. "We have the ability to shine a light on the bright spots, whether those are relationships that bring joy or movements in our community that are helping grow connection. It's where we choose to focus our attention, it's where we use our power to focus the attention of others, that ultimately determines whether or not we create more light in the world or more darkness." That is the fundamental strategy of What's Good, Roanoke. I would love to have conversation and questions.
Let me share with you something from my perspective. And, and understand this, my perspective comes from 35 years in the criminal justice system, dealing with adult offenders, from rape to murder. All of those people, I've worked with over the years, and a number of folks I've got are coming back to our city now. Last week, I had, there were three people that were shot with a gun. That were shot, one person died in a, in a place that was, it was an adult nightclub. This next day, there was a home invasion with adults ages 20 through 35 through 40. I, I understand what's happening and it's good with our youth. As I heard you say, young people and our programs. But what I'm getting is not the cry from, we have young people and I appreciate the programs that we're doing. But what, the question I'm asked is, what are you doing for the 20, 25, 55-year-old that's shooting just as much as the young people? As a matter of fact, probably more. I'm getting that. I'm, I'm, you know, we're branding and going to places and putting gun violence prevention on cups and whatever. But the people, we have and whatever, but the people we have out here are not doing that. I mean, they're not reading, they're not getting cups, they're not paying any attention to that. And I guarantee you, if you talk to many mayors across this country, and I know here in Virginia, they're having the same issue. I'm just concerned with what am I, what answers am I giving to those citizens that can't sit on their porch because gun violence is going, they're shooting, people driving by shooting. And these are not kids. These are not, when I say kids, these are folks in their middle twenties, thirties, forties. And people are dying. So as mayor, I get calls saying, "You promised to keep us safe." Not from John Smith, the youth, but keep us safe from Sherman Lee, the habitual offender with two felony records that does what he wants to do. That's what I'm looking for as an elected official that promised our people that public safety will be something we will make a priority. And we've done that. And I'm hearing a lot of presentations, and again, this is just my perspective, but what am I doing with that adult that's coming, I mean, just adult? We had a, we had this strategic planning meeting back a few weeks ago before we could get home in our car, and it was publicized across the city. But before we could get home, we had a gun violence incident right in the community and not too far from where we were. So I'm having to answer those kinds of questions or at least try. And so that's what I am looking for. When we're talking about spending so much money, grant money, or spending money on this, fine, but hey, tell me something that I can do with these two, three-time convicted felons that are loading in this community. What are we doing for them? What's, what's, what can we do to curb that? Because the scoreboard, we're not, if you look at the scoreboard, we're not winning. Matter of fact, we're losing and it looks like it's increasing more. And this is just, you know, I don't have, I got the data that we can get to you, but this is what's happening. So tell me, what can we do to curb that? I've almost given up saying, "Stop it, curb it." You know, you go to a week with three or four shootings a week and people are afraid. Well, we won't admit it or not, you go in the community, they are afraid to come out at night. They're afraid, afraid to sit on the porch. And so we're talking gun violence commission, what are we doing? I mean, what are you guys giving us that I can go back and say, "Hey, we got something?" And I heard this song that it takes a little while, it's going to be five to 10 years, you know? I won't tell you my age, but that doesn't comfort me too much when they say five, 10 years. Hey, I want to know when I go to Food Lion, I don't have to worry about a shooting. We got a shooting, we have a shooting in that grocery store. Adults, both of them adults. We have a shooting in a well-secured nightclub. So help me with that.
I understand, and I have to tell you, I have to speak from a position of humility here, that social marketing, advertising, communications, isn't going to divert that 55-year-old from paths, from choices that have been made for him in his life or that he has made in his life. So I want to be frank, this will not head that off. I do know that this community has invested in law enforcement and you've made the short-term and long-term investments. Those have to be two sides of the same coin. What this offers you, the opportunity, is to promote the programs so that we stop producing those 55-year-olds, so that a 17-year-old in this community today knows how to get connected to someone like Mr. Stovall and his or her life takes a different direction. That's the opportunity we can do from a point of view of social marketing while you still have and will need a strong law enforcement presence. It's not neither or, it has to be both, is what I'm arguing.
Okay, well, that's, well, to a degree, I guess I could be candid with those citizens that asked me about that. There is no short-term answer.
We didn't get here overnight and we're not going to get out of this place overnight.
But are we focusing on the right population? I guess the young people are the right population, youth is the population that we need to focus. Are there interventions for the 35-year-old with felony record?
I know from our interviews, I know a little from our interviews, that there is good work being done with returning citizens, there's good work being done at the jail to make a stop at the jail an opportunity, not a confirmation. Those programs do exist. It's outside of the scope of what we've done right here, but those programs do exist.
All right. This is a pretty...
I have a question and then some comments, but ask the question first. So this is a social media, largely media focused campaign focused on our youth promoting our programs. What are the data points for which you'll measure success for this? And then I have some comments to make, but I wanted to focus on that first.
Yeah, it's an excellent question. The metrics are going to be number of young people engaged, number of families engaged, and I would suggest we're at an opportunity to broaden out our dashboard. Gun Violence Prevention Commission, the council, you've been very disciplined about looking at data, and you look at data routinely about gun violence incidents and type and police reports. I think we can broaden that to look at how many young people last month had an interaction with an adult, not their parents? How many were involved in a program? How many people were served by the food programs? Growing those and tracking that is the point of this quote. We need to put our attention to both.
And how long is this campaign sought to be for? Is this an annual campaign or within a six-month time period? I'm sorry if I missed that point earlier.
Yep, so the buildup of the infrastructure, the website and that is perennial. Once that's built, it's there. The budget is for a media campaign, a six-month media campaign to launch it and get it out there. And then we shouldn't have an evaluation and consider how to continue sustaining that going forward.
Some reduced costs then and some sustaining going forward with the launch being rather larger. Well, I'm going to make some comments on it. First, thank you for putting all this together. I know that it's a very large task. I like that it focuses on positive values, promoting the programs that we already have, trying to find ways to make those more effective. Where I think what I was hoping to see, and this may point to some of what the mayor was speaking about earlier, as we have focused media campaigns and largely the work that the Gun Violence Prevention Commission is doing now, the outcomes are, do seem to be focused on long-term outcomes and what is the result going to be down the line, connecting people's services now and seeing what impact that will have either six months, a year, a few years down the line on someone's entire development as a human being. But I think the concern that I share with the mayor and some sentiments is, I've seen other media campaigns that have focused, very targeted, the geofencing and otherwise, on reducing retaliatory action. And what can we do with these media dollars to say that between Memorial Day and Labor Day, that we're going to see a reduction in the gun violence episodes that we had from prior years before when we didn't have a campaign like that, like this? I've seen this with a few other cities focused on the violence reduction aspect, not so much on the promotion there. I think this is a very important piece to promote and should definitely be included. I would just hope that some aspect of this focusing will target those individuals because the, I think there's a comment you made earlier about the reaching the citizen that's not particularly the youth and how to address those situations. But these other media campaigns have been incredibly effective at something may happen in a neighborhood, and they will target social media, geofencing, you know, video game ads, ads at convenience stores everywhere focused on just like, the one I'm referencing is one that was called Respect Richmond, that Respect Richmond, we all live here, this is our home. And they had a great impact on reducing in that time period. Now, outside that time period, I'm not sure what the long-term impact was of their short-term funds. This is a long-term media strategy, but I would hope that there would be somewhere within these dollars spent that we could also focus on addressing that short-term cause. And I'm sure Councilman Cobb has some feedback for me based on this, but that is just my input to share, but thank you for putting this all together.
Absolutely.
Oh, Bizel.
Thank you for your presentation.
Certainly.
And I'm glad we're having a marketing campaign. We've had several campaigns. And I hope that for this amount of $162,000, it will be effective. I do like the thought of being positive. I like the idea, and I'm always promoting that, what is the good that Roanoke has and not always looking at the bad. But yet we see more negative and we do have those conversations. The councillors, the mayor have said, when we are out, what are we doing? What is available? And I'm glad to hear with this marketing, hopefully we will cover that. What we are doing, what programs are available, what is, even what's in the schools. Some of them I know about and I'm sure the other colleagues know too. But yet we still are not getting that information across, we're not being effective. And I'm glad to hear about the partnership, mainly with the law enforcement, because we are building up our police department to help fight the crime. And I stress that, that's where we need to be looking at with law enforcement and building that trust. So I was glad you mentioned that. As well as with the information of partnering with the community, with the barbers, you know, out in the, putting information out, going to the old school, I call it, versus social media, because everyone is not on social media. Everyone don't follow Facebook, everyone don't look at the city's webpage, especially the older people who are, as the mayor says, are afraid. But for them who do go to the laundromat or go get their haircut or go to the hairstylist, they can have that information to know that the city offers this for your grandchild, your great-grandchild, your neighbor's child, to get the word out. And working with the schools, because I do know that even in the middle school, there are some programs being done to work with the youth at risk, at risk ones especially. And I think getting that information out is good as well. And also, again, just, I would like to see where the city is, and they are now, taking that action to convey these programs. And I just think even with the Gun Violence Commission, just need to tighten it up a little bit. It's just so broad of everything, you're trying to be everything to all people. And I think you just got to bring it back down some and zoom in on some programs that are effective and not so broad-based. I do know of a community did that had a high crime level of gun violence and hired a gun violence coordinator, and within two years were able to bring their numbers down. So I do know in the short term, it can be done with the right programs put in place and working with law enforcement. So I commend you on wanting to be part of that with the campaign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Like I said this morning, I just want to thank you guys for the approach that you've taken and all of the hard work that you've put into the gun violence prevention. And I think the social media campaign is imperative because we do want to focus on behavior changes, attitudes, and making sure that our residents are connected with services. But I would like to also see if we can look at something that has a little bit more of a direct impact, like violence interrupters or some way, because we're going into our third year, I think, and it would be nice to be able to quantify what we've done or see some numbers, whether they're trending down or up or stable or whatever. I just don't think that we as council, and I shouldn't probably speak for the whole council, but for me personally, I've not seen any numbers that suggest that the Gun Violence Prevention Commission has had an impact on reducing the gun violence per se in the communities. And I know we're working on behaviors, which is a long-term impact, and I can appreciate that, and we talk about that all the time. It doesn't happen overnight. But in the interim, is there something that we can do on our side or on the police side or whatever? I mean, I'm certainly open for recommendations that would have some direct impact on this gun violence, because as the mayor said, you know, I live in Northwest too, and I am not afraid to go out now, but there are people who are, and it just happens so close, I mean, you just think it can't get any closer to your house and it's close to your house. So we are just, we're just struggling here to find some answers. And I, I've heard a lot about violence interrupters. You know, I've mentioned it a couple of times today, talking about this sustainability conference I went to, that we were there to talk about sustainability and gun violence was a topic. And they talked about the violence interrupters and involving the corporate community. So there are a lot of things that we can do. I just want to say that I am, as a member of this council, open and receptive to any ideas that you can bring forward to address the immediate need of trying to at least tone it down or try to curb it, like the mayor said.
I'll offer a discouraging thought and then an encouraging thought.
Either way.
The discouraging thought, one of my colleagues in this work consults to the CDC on their gun violence prevention work. And nationwide, the picture is very discouraging. In community after community, it's very discouraging. What I think the opportunity and uniquely in Roanoke is you are a small enough, tight enough community with a social fabric of organizations. I think you have a chance to do something here that most communities can't. And there are services, there are commitments, this community is mobilized in ways that few communities are. That doesn't mean it's going to be easy or fast. The proliferation of guns is what we're fighting. And sadly, slowing the rate of increase is a win. And it's a win that most other cities aren't seeing.
And so do we have some numbers or some data that suggests that is what I'm...
I'll turn to Joe on the data.
Well, I, with this last couple of weeks, I'll have to look at this year.
Recalculate.
But I will say, you know, the, over the three years, and we have 10-year data that I can reshare, but over the last three years, we have definitely seen an increase in homicides. But we have seen, it's been very static level in terms of aggravated assaults. There haven't been big swings either way. Now, that's not saying that there's a decrease, but that is something of note, that we're not seeing a huge increase or uptick. And some of that you just have to measure over the course of time, which is why that 10-year analysis might be interesting to look at again and see where that is.
You know, it's just, you know, we live in a community where people are asking us the questions, and the mayor, I'm sure, has that pressure all the time because he is the mayor. But we get approached constantly about the gun violence and what are we doing? And I agree with the mayor, it's just nice to be able to give them some sort of feedback or convey what it is that we're trying to accomplish. And sometimes I find it very difficult to do that because I don't really know what the answers are myself, quite candidly.
The other thing I'll add is that the Attorney General's Office is looking at supporting a number of communities, including Roanoke, with a program very similar to what Luke was talking about, Respect Richmond, which is the geofencing, but it's very enforcement targeted. And it's also designed to do some of the very things you described. It's a different focus than this campaign because it's primarily enforcement and justice based, and it's designed to like have a dedicated online confidential link that if people don't want to call a number, they can just send a tip. So it's got a tip line. The thing about that program is, and they tested this out in Richmond in a couple of public housing neighborhoods, and they did see a significant increase in tips reported. And they did see a gradual decline and pretty dramatic decline originally. The challenge they found was sustaining that over time, because that dedicated focused marketing program was three months. And so they did see a dramatic thing. So my question to them was, how do we sustain that?
Over a period of time.
Because you don't want to just feel safe for three months.
And these are... And these are things that you're referring to on the enforcement side, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So I was just asking, is there something we can do as a council to help? You know?
You know, and I would, I'll tee up Joe to talk about the work of Mr. Stovall and Mr. Roberts and the Reset Team. You're doing violence interruption in a real way, and Corillian through the emergency department does some very aggressive work trying to respond in the moment when there's a gunshot. Those pieces are in existence.
I think what we can do is work together to find ways to secure additional funding, to really study more thoroughly some of the violence interruption programs and their effectiveness. I was, there was a webinar a couple of weeks ago that the Giffords program did, named after Gabby Gifford, former congresswoman, on the Baltimore Safe Streets Program, which is a violence interruption program. And some of those work very effectively in communities. And they work effectively when they have key staff that are leading them, when they have ways to sustain and expand their volunteer base, and have sustainable funding. So I think to do a review of some of those things, that could be a quick, well, quick in a way. You gotta get the team together.
Be careful with that word, quick.
I know, you gotta get the team together. But I think you can, that can be another piece of the work, because as great as the, you know, the Reset Team is, and ER's response, and the police, there are still going to be those gaps, and that's what, you know, the mayor's talking about. And the other thing is that, I was talking with someone in Fire and EMS recently about one of these recent shootings, and it, Mayor, you named it. I mean, there are some people who want this to happen, and they don't have any problem with it. There's a callousness, a brazenness, they're just happy for it to happen. And it's like, yeah, great, that happened to me, that's one thing on my list, check it off.
Check it off.
And then cussing the, you know, Fire and EMS. So it's adding to their stress. So we've also got to figure out, and that's the behavioral piece, how do we change that mindset?
Yeah.
That's so bent on violence, and that's a tougher thing. But I think, Mayor, that's exactly what you were talking about. How do we, how do we hone in on that?
Well, I will, and I'm done. I will say one other thing that is on a positive note. They were going through naming things that should be done, like, get your community to go on these walks. And I went, check. You know, we have the Reset Team, check. You know, they don't have fed up, you know, and I explained that. So I know that we're doing a lot of things that other communities are not even doing or have even thought about. So it's just frustrating to know that you're doing all those things, and you still feel like, what else can we do? So I do want to commend you for all the things that you're doing, because some of that stuff they name, we've been doing it.
And it's not work that we're doing, it's work you all have done. And I just want to underscore, if, you know, you think about all of those things that are going on, that mom with her head down, trying just to raise her kids, she doesn't know all that's going on out there. And if we can bring to her all of these resources in a way she can access, we've made a measurable difference.
Yeah. And that's why I say I really have to emphasize all of that work, you know, as far as the behavior changes, the attitudes, and making the services available. You know, you can't say enough about all of that. So I do want to commend you all and us for what we're doing. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, anybody else? Well, you still have more to come.
I'm done.
Okay. Let me just say that I appreciate everything that you have done and what they're doing, and what the gun violence commission has done. And I think, I think you capitalized it for me by saying, give me the good news and the bad news out there that all we're struggling with. And I tell you, you can go to a conference, you can go to a conference now, the National League of Cities, the National Civic League, and you bring everybody together, and you ask the mayors or councilmen, what's your biggest problem? It's gun violence. I mean, but that's, you know, I can't, I can't go out and tell them, that doesn't sell. I mean, hey, look, it's happening in New York.
Right.
Well, it's happening in New York City. I say, yeah, I don't live there, but what's happening right here? And that's the point I'm making. And I realized when I took this job that, you know, I was going to get credit for a lot of things, probably if somebody else did it, but I'm also going to get the blame for some things that I can't grasp or stop. And so from a political standpoint, you know, we ran last time on, your city's going to be safe, we're going to make it safe. And I can guarantee you, when the politics of this national elections comes around, cities and gun violence and control is going to be an issue. I can guarantee that in the presidential campaign, in the senate campaign, especially in local campaign. But I'm not too concerned about the campaigns. I mean, I didn't sign on for this job for life, it's not a sign. But I, but I do want to give it the best that I can while I am serving, while I'm here. And that's all I want. And again, maybe some people may say I'm a little cynical, being in correction for thirty-some odd years, but I just see some people, and I see them in the street, that I think if you said, look, we're going, okay, you don't need to put the guns on, you don't need to go with that, they just determined to do it. Fights and agreements now are settled by guns. And that's just so, I'm just so afraid, because the shootings, in my opinion, and this is not, I'm speaking for council, used to be with somebody you knew. Drug deal wasn't bad, somebody messing with your woman, all of this. But now, I'm sensing that people, so if they want to shoot, if they want to shoot Dr. Anderson back there, they'll take the gun and shoot, it makes no difference who's there, they just want to get him. And if somebody's there to get a bullet, you're in the wrong place at the wrong time. I'm concerned with that, because that's, you have a lot of people getting hurt, a lot of people getting killed or getting bullets, because bullets don't have names on them. They don't have names. Once they leave, that trigger's pulled. So that's what scares me. And so we have funerals, and those things come up, and I try to get by some as much as I can, but it's tough. And especially with that 20 to 30 age group, and you know that, gosh, did that have to happen, is the way to do it. So that's what we're dealing with, we're no different from other cities. And some cities can say their numbers have went down. They haven't stopped it, but their numbers have gone down. And like you're saying, we can do some things for the last two, three months, but sustaining that is going to be a challenge, and I guess it's just the time that we live in. But I appreciate everything that everybody's doing, Corillian, we got a work group, we're collaborative in this city, we work with it, we're there. But I tell you, it just gets so frustrating when they say anything. That shooting last week, when they got paid security in the building, and then three people get shot, and one person died. And that's just, and the business community is afraid now. They'll say, look, I'm not, they don't want to reinterpret it as we do, so that's just after 12 o'clock at night, 12:00 AM. Oh, no, they say, I'm not going downtown, because you never know when things come out, and that'll affect us. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Is that all under that item, or is it?
It's that.
Okay. All right, we got some items that are recommended for action. Item A, appropriation for FY23 VDOT Street Maintenance Q3 and Q4 Payments Incremental Revenue. There's the budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, can you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance appropriating funding from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Transportation, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2022-2023 capital projects and general fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right, is there any questions or discussion from members of council?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a question, and then ask for a correction in the report. I don't know if anyone caught it. In your second paragraph, second sentence on September the 6th, 2023, should it be 2022, when council approved a budget ordinance?
Yeah, because we haven't met yet, September 23rd, so.
Yeah, that was one, that one, I just, I didn't know if anyone had mentioned that, that that just needed to be corrected. But my question is, I was looking at the revenue amount that was budgeted with regards to that being divided over two quarters. Is that money already in place for this amount, the 14, I mean, 1 million, or 1.4 million to be, to just throw out a number there, from the increase for the two quarters? Has that money already been appropriated?
Wayne is saying, no.
Okay, so this is an additional amount for street paving?
Yes, definitely, that is the case.
That's what I wanted to find out. You know, sometimes we already have anticipated money coming in.
Yeah, no, this is, this is the rare occasion when we're actually getting some additional funding.
Okay, that's what my question was. Okay, thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, Mr. Way up over there.
We switched.
All right, I think we're ready to call a roll on this.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboyd?
Aye.
Mr. Rollison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item B is execution of an extraterritorial arrest agreement with Virginia Western Community College. There's an ordinance.
Move the ordinance. Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing an extraterritorial arrest agreement to be entered into between the city of Roanoke and Virginia Western Community College to provide for extraterritorial arrest powers when certain offenses are committed in the presence of on-duty city officers within a VWCC campus and for VWCC officers within the city, and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
I think I understand it. Mr. Cow, could you explain a little bit?
Sure. So what this is, is similar to what we have with Roanoke County and some of the other, Salem and some of the other jurisdictions. What this essentially means is that if one of the officers there at Virginia Western Community College, who are, of course, peace officers, as just as ours are, has to actually leave the campus involved in some sort of criminal activity, they're investigating a criminal activity or involved in pursuing something, they can, they can make an arrest outside of their jurisdiction in there. So this is just putting that on par with those other jurisdictions as well.
Great, great. Any discussion, members of council? Madam Clerk, are you ready to vote on?
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboyd?
Aye.
Mr. Rollison?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Item C is approval of a five-year plan for opioid settlement funds, direct distribution and grants from the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph?
A resolution authorizing the city manager or his designee to make grant applications to the Virginia Opioid Abatement Authority on behalf of the city of Roanoke for grant funds to enter into a cooperative agreements with our regional partners for regional grants from the VOAA, and acknowledging the city's voluntary agreement to adhere to the VOAA's gold standard requirements that will allow the city to receive a 25% increase in funding.
All right, any discussion, members of council on that?
And Mr. Mayor, if we can, we've got a brief presentation that Wayne is going to walk you through. I think that'll give a little bit more clarity on what this is, because this is the first time we're actually doing this. And while Wayne is opening that presentation, I'll give you a very quick overview, as it's indicated in the council report. Of course, the city of Roanoke, like other jurisdictions, obviously across the Commonwealth, actually across the entire nation, are parties of litigation against a variety of folks tied with opioids, either their manufactured distribution or other. And as a part of that settlement, we all are receiving a certain amount of funding in order to respond to, really, the fallout from that with opioids. We are, we have already been receiving those funds, and will continue to do so over a 17-year period, at least a 17-year period. And the state of Virginia, though, has established this authority. We are required, even those funds that are dedicated only to us, we're required to actually submit to them on annual basis, how we're going to use those funds. There is also money coming to the state, which will allow us to compete for additional funds. And what I wanted to do is actually give the council an overview with Wayne how we got there and what we're proposing. And we're actually showing you how we anticipate spending these dollars over the next five years, because we didn't want to just show you this one year, we want to kind of put it in a larger context. At the end, you'll see we are ultimately going to be submitting our requests for that first year, and also grant two years? Two years, because it's the existing year and the next year, yeah? And then we'll also have grant applications, which actually will be for five years, and you'll see that when Wayne goes through this presentation. This is all in partnership, as you all know, with the Roanoke Valley Collective Response. That's, they have been our partners for several years on this effort, and they certainly have helped guide us through this. And now Wayne can walk through the details of what this is.
Good, thank you, Bob. Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. It's been a long day. I appreciate all the work that you guys do, listening to a lot about challenges and opportunities. And of course, what I'm going to talk about today is really about the big challenge that at least in some sense has led to some opportunities here. Bob set this up very nicely, so I'm going to go through this pretty quickly, but of course, we're available to take questions. I also have some experts in the room, if you will. We're going to talk a little bit about the collective response. We have Robert Knatt here, who's the director. We also have Nancy Hands, who's on the collective advisory committee of the collective response here as well. So first off, the Opioid Abatement Authority was created by the General Assembly to help abate and remediate the opioid epidemic, and they do so through financial assistance that's offered through them as a result of the settlements, which I'll talk a little bit about. We had opioid settlement funds that continue. We have a few that have been settled, and we're starting to see money from those. This is just an example of some of those. I believe I also handed out a paper copy of this PowerPoint for you all, so I won't go in detail, but you can see a sizable amount of money has been relayed back down to the Commonwealth. As part of that, the Opioid Abatement Authority has established a gold standard, because this settlement money is a little bit different than a lot of the funds that I work with, whether it's general fund money or grant funds. This is actually funds that are a result of a settlement, different settlements, and they all have different requirements. So what the Opioid Abatement Authority tried to do was set a standard, a high-level standard, that if we met that standard, we would meet the requirements for all the other settlements. So it's sort of a CYA, if you will. So in that, we will see in the resolution today that we will agree to utilize the funds to treat, prevent, and reduce opioid use disorder, or the misuse of opioids, by using evidence-based or evidence-informed methods, programs, strategies. We won't supplant existing funding, and that we will provide the authority with information on the implementation of those projects and report back to them. So as the money came down to the Commonwealth and through the Opioid Abatement Authority, it was split in a few different ways. The 30% was given directly, as a direct distribution, to cities and counties throughout the Commonwealth. There's 15% that stayed with the Commonwealth, and then the Opioid Abatement Authority kept 55%. And I believe I zoom in here, you can see with the Virginia OAA's cut of the money, if you will, they have set aside 15%. It sort of works as entitlement funds. This is money that, as a city that was involved with the settlements, along with Commonwealth, we're entitled that amount of money. However, we have to apply for that money and let them know what we're going to use that, those monies for, in order to obtain them. They also have a certain amount of money that's available for cooperative partnerships, and we'll talk a little bit about that in a moment when we get to the actual budget. But if we partner with some of our surrounding localities, we can dip into another pot of funding to fund projects. And then there's also some money that goes directly to state agencies. I think this slide says it hadn't been opened yet, it actually did open about a week and a half ago, where if you're a state agency, you can now apply for some of this funding as well. And then there's the unrestricted pot, which is being used, I believe, for some of the incentive and for other things that the Virginia OAA can do. So, you know, there's a lot of numbers here, but this is just to show that this funding continues for a long period of time. So they're already starting to calculate, just for the city of Roanoke on this slide, how much money we have that's starting to build. We expect that this will grow as more settlements happen. As we look at just over the next five years, if you will, through FY28, which is the period of period of time I set the budget for, all that calculates all of the money that we either receive directly or are eligible through the OAA, along with the incentive, if we meet the gold standard, equates to about $1.5 million, which is how we sort of established the top part of this five-year budget, where we look at using the funds that are either directly dispersed or part of our OAA local entitlement, if you will. So I'm gonna talk about these programs on separate slides individually, but I'll also show here on the bottom of the slide, you'll see that we are also looking at cooperative grant programs and working with our partners locally to receive other funding. So our main partner in this, and really what sets us, I think, apart from a lot of places in the Commonwealth, is that we've been starting to do some of this work, in some ways are a little bit ahead of the game, because we've been partnering with the Roanoke Valley Collective Response Group. We currently are funding them through some of our American Rescue Plan Act money. That's helped them get staff, locate with the Regional Commission. As I'll talk in a minute, we hope to continue to use some of this money to fund them as well. But this, many of you probably know a lot about the collective response, so I won't dwell on this too much, but they look at a multi-sector approach to working on this issue of opioid and addiction crisis throughout the Roanoke Valley. They have several different members from all different stakeholder groups. They have a blueprint for action that guides them. The Regional Commission also recently did a white paper building on that blueprint. So I'm gonna go through the projects quickly. Feel free to stop me if you have questions, where we, of course, have time for questions at the end. The first thing is we wanted to look, we heard a little bit about ACE today, adverse childhood experiences and trauma-informed education. So one of the first projects we're looking at is a pilot project that would work with two after-school programs to provide facilitation, ACE training to all the staff members and to the families of those children. And then ultimately, the goal is to expand this into the school district. The second project we're gonna apply for is for certified peer recovery specialists. This is a project that we hope will grow up to maybe as many as four recovery specialists in this timeframe, but we're talking about a pilot, and we've had preliminary conversations with the sheriff's office about perhaps having a peer recovery specialist work with them. Also of note, the collective response currently has a peer network, and so as this grows, we'll continue to tap in to the existing infrastructure of peer recovery specialists we have in the community. The next item is really two items, but they both deal with sort of supplies, if you will. The first one are xylazine test strips. Unfortunately, we're already seeing xylazine in the drugs within our community. This is, in some ways, very much like fentanyl. Yeah, go ahead.
What's xylazine?
So I'm not an expert on what it is, but it's actually normally a force tranquilizer, I believe, that they cut with drugs, you know, like they currently use fentanyl to cut drugs with, to increase the potency, to likely increase the addiction component of it as well. And it's dangerous. So much like fentanyl, xylazine can lead you more likely to have an overdose and have complications. And some of our existing overdose drugs, you know, do not work on some of those substances. So we're talking about test strips. The Harm Reduction Coalition currently distributes test strips for fentanyl, as I understand it, but this would add the opportunity to have xylazine test strips as well. There also is funding for a mass spectrometer, so people could come in and bring in their empty bags, if you will, of drugs and have them tested to find out what is in the drugs that they're buying. And then for supplies and training for city and EMS, this is talking about medication to reverse those overdoses from opioids and training on how to use those medications. There is currently a warm line at the Blue Ridge Behavioral Health Care, which is a peer assisted recovery network where people can call in for help. The idea with this funding project is to do some marketing for it. The numbers and the use of that line have gone down, but of course, as we know, there's probably a growing need within our community for that. So we wanted to do some updated marketing to refresh that line, if you will. And so, to, those were all the locally funded direct dispersment and local funds. We're now looking at cooperative grants we want to apply for. The first one up is continuing the funding of the collective response group. So as I mentioned, we've been funding the last couple of years through some American Rescue Plan Act monies, the collective response, so they can staff and locate with the Regional Commission. We're gonna seek funding to let them continue to grow, grow their staff, grow their office space, and create marketing for their program, continue to do the work that they're doing. They also will likely gain a bigger role as they help us and all other localities sort of manage some of these funds as well, because they really are the natural go-to for organizing these cooperative approaches to these projects. We also, as part of that, as we begin talking with the collective response about projects and what we could do within the community, we realized that there are larger projects out there. And so in subsequent years, we want to open up the opportunity for people to come in with larger projects that may help solve this program, this problem, I should say, with programs. And so the collective response is going to initiate a project solicitation approach where they put a request for proposals out there, rate those, figure out which score is highest, and then seek funding through the Virginia OAA to fund them. Many of those are regional in nature, so they likely will be funded through cooperative grants, but they could also be funded through local dollars as well. And then also, we've had a lot of conversation about the need to focus on recovery housing. So we hope to have a cooperative grant, may not apply this May, but perhaps in October. We hope to work with the county to look at a recovery housing plan for our larger region. And in many ways, we want to bring in the county in conversations about that, because it may affect the potential Catawba Hospital project, as we look at recovery housing in the city, other parts of the region, but also in and around that potential Catawba Hospital expansion. And then also, a small grant with the Juvenile Domestic Relations Court. This would explore hiring caseworkers to serve families that are affected by opioid addictions, with the overall goal to help keep kids out of the foster care system and keep families together. So that's a pretty quick look at the projects we're looking at over the next five years. I will say, we are asking for a lot of our Virginia OAA money upfront. We still have some money in the direct dispersments, and that money will continue to grow, so we likely will expand this list of projects as we go forward. But we really want it to be pretty quick, 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 quick to the start on this, is the first deadline is May 5th, so we will be applying for projects this week. And then there's a subsequent deadline in October, where we may have some other projects come into play as well.
And it is our intention, since we, you know, again, we'll be receiving funding for at least the next 17 years, and it's on kind of a rolling basis, that we will come back to you all on an annual basis, both to report on what's been accomplished with previous year's funding, but also, just like we do with our CIP, we'll keep adding to that five-year schedule as we move along as well. And may, of course, as Wayne's mentioned, bring into the mix additional regional projects as well.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lefrich.
One of the questions is just kind of, how many more of these settlements do we have that are still kind of out there in the ether?
I will ask our city attorney, who happens to also sit on the Virginia OAA board.
Let me just say that our attorney, Tim Spencer, did your own work on this, have been following this for a while, so thank you, Tim, for your efforts.
Now, part of it, this is about half what's already been approved. If you remember, it was last month, wasn't it? We approved the Walgreens, Walmart, CVS settlements. So that's, this is about half of that. We still have out there, the Sackler family is out there, and then there is currently a push going on that I think is gonna be resolved, that another bundle of entities is about to settle. They've tried, Judge Polster in Ohio is the MDL judge, and they've tried to have him removed, which is exactly what Walgreens did before they went, uh-oh, I guess we have to settle. And they're trying to catch him, because he said, hey, you have your choice. You can settle or trial. And they're trying to say, ah, you're trying to trap us in a trial. He said, no, no, trial means all the motions practice. So anyhow, I think we're about two-thirds of the way there, and then we can expect about another third. Currently, we have approved over $1 billion through the Commonwealth of Virginia. City of Roanoke, under the formula, is the 10th largest locality receiving these funds. Even though we are not the 10th largest locality population-wise, that just tells you the impact that we've suffered. Wayne has done an absolutely wonderful job. We've had support of the city manager in this. I can't say enough good things about the work that they have done to get us to this point.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you for getting all this set up, and I love that we're able to see this five-year plan, just like our CIP.
And this deals with your potential projects, mainly on the ACE awareness and training. I think it's on page six, or maybe it'll page five. The main one I'm looking at is where you have your pilot working with two local after-school programs. Have those programs been identified?
I would say that one has, and then we have not truly identified the other, although we, well, our goal is to, we had one identified in the northwest area of the city, and we were looking in southeast for the other.
And then where you're looking to expand the program to RCPS.
Yes.
You've already worked with the, you've already talked with the school superintendent and all to work through.
There's been some preliminary conversations.
Oh, okay, okay. It's still in, okay, the discussion piece, okay. I think that's it. Thank you.
Two questions. The first, focusing on the recovery housing plan, I was mainly focused on thinking about Catawba Hospital throughout this project. So would it be based on the plan that's developed in fiscal year '24 that might yield recommendations for how these larger projects can be used in the cooperative grant program for the future years? And as we have the program 2024, and the other ones are beyond that, just wanted to make sure, because I didn't see anything otherwise that directs towards Catawba Hospital. I want to make sure that that is adequately considered, especially in years going forward. The other is just, you know, in the event, I expect this is all to the gold standard, but in the event that we don't meet that, what in here will be clawed back? Will it be like everything that's proposed, we'll see a 25% reduction in what they'll be receiving, or where will those decisions be made? Will something be brought back to us?
Of course, our goal and resolution ahead of you this evening, afternoon, is the gold standard and the idea that we would meet the gold standard. If we did not meet that gold standard, it's, if you can see on the chart here on the far-right corner, that's that 25% incentive that affects the OAA money that they hold for us, the sort of local entitlement. If we meet that gold standard, we get that 25% incentive on top of that. Is that?
Yes, but as I understand, the resolution is drafted as though, assuming that we are going to meet the gold standard. And if for some reason that we do not, then how will these expenditures change?
Well, I'll go and turn to the city attorney.
This has been a little bit of a tension, even though I sit on the Grants Committee in the VOA. The way that they've done it, and I'm starting to see the wisdom, I used to, I was a little bit frustrated with Charlie Linsicum, who is heading up the grant side of things on the administration. And that is, I felt like Charlie was being extremely bureaucratic by requiring us to detail what we were gonna spend the money on upfront in quite so much detail. The wisdom of that is, if we articulate exactly what we're doing, we've set forth something that meets the gold standard. We spend the money on what we said, then we're satisfied. Otherwise, you're right, there would be a clawback. If we said, okay, we're gonna spend it, for example, if we say we're gonna expend it on a clinic, and we don't spend it on the clinic, instead we spend it for something else that doesn't qualify, they get to take that money back, and that's under the settlements. Settlements require this as well.
So we would know prior to the full award?
We know prior to the approval.
That was my concern, just to make sure what changes would happen.
And like I said, initially, I was a little bit frustrated and accused Charlie of being overly bureaucratic, but the true wisdom is, is that by making us do that work ahead of time, this keeps staff levels lower, so that they're not having to search at the end of the process to ensure, we just certify that we spent the money on what we said we were gonna spend it on.
That's fine. I think in this instance, I could be accused of the same allegation.
I had a quick thing. I had an update from one of our harm reduction groups in the city. They were talking about the introduction of xylazine into the community. But, and one of the things they said was, it is, but it, they're still training with Narcan, but this doesn't always respond to Narcan. So that's throwing an interesting twist into the whole mix. But the good news, they shared, was that Roanoke was recently named the city in Virginia with the highest number of non-fatal overdoses, which means that harm reduction techniques are working. So I raised that to say, and I know the collective response is probably gathering this data, do we have a breakdown of the things we're trying to measure? You know, I think about the increased number of fire EMS calls. You know, is that one of the things we're tracking, to see a reduction in that? Are we looking to see, you know, we had four times the number of overdose deaths last year than we did gun violence homicides. Are we tracking that to see if that's gonna start trending down, along with the non-fatal overdoses? I'm just curious about those sort of data points to help us measure success. Right, and I will say, as we apply for this funding, we will be establishing more of those metrics to follow as we apply for these projects. I don't know if the collective, do you want to speak to any data that you guys track at this point in time, Robert, or?
We do.
Do you mean to put you on the spot?
We do track several measures through ODMAP as a partner, as well as FACT, Framework for Addiction Analysis and Community Transformation. But I think to specifically answer your question, included in the application, going for the gold standard, we would identify those measures within each individual grant application.
And I think it'll be, as you've seen in the requests that are made, too, you'll see those performance measures in those areas that have immediate impact. For example, testing to see whether you have a relatively deadly drug in your presence, all the way out to recovery housing, and trying to track how many folks are able to get into recovery housing, graduate out, if you will, from that recovery housing. So it'll hit across the full spectrum of those as well.
All right, Mrs. Sanchez.
I have, my question is, have you seen an increase in our community of xylazine? And how many, and could you predict how many deaths have we had in the community from xylazine?
Yes, we have seen an increase. I don't have any recent data as of this year, but we have a crisis intervention and connection-to-care subgroup within the collective response, and I would be happy to request the latest information to share that data with you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
All right, we have to vote on that, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volason?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Pretty?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes.
All right, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna put you on the test now. Where are we on number?
We're at 10.
Comments of city.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I skipped by.
That's okay, you've heard enough from me, but I do have one item, one item which actually just came across my phone here a few moments ago. So if you happen to be in the vicinity of Grandin Village area, I would encourage you to, in the area around kind of the core of the village... to, in the area around kind of the core of the, of the village, over closer to, I think, the 711 area, but on the opposite side of the street. Ed Walker has actually installed a tribute to Mr. Tarpley and it went in place today. It's a partnership with the city and it may at time, it may at some point become part of our public art collection as well. So would encourage folks, it went up today, so encourage folks to stop by there and take a look at it. That is my only item, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Spencer, do we need to come out of closed meeting to make the announcements on the trustees and then go back in because we got another closed meeting?
Do you have another closed meeting this evening?
Do we have another closed meeting?
Yes, we do.
Then what we can do is we can move the certification of the closed meeting till afterwards, but you can go ahead and take action at item 10 on the measure that you have before you. And I hope I got the names right here.
Okay. Yeah, I think you're right. Go there.
Before we get to that, just to further explain the reports to the committee, I wanted to just let everybody know about the RVARC, the Roanoke Valley Allegheny Regional Commission. We voted to have a legislative committee to help push regional items such as Catawba Hospital when we're going to the state legislature every year. And I was appointed to that. So I'll be representing the city for, for that body and there's about seven folks that are going to be on that.
No, I just need to. Yes, you are.
I have a question from this morning. That draft resolution personnel committee, is that being introduced today or on the, all on the?
All on the next from 17th.
All on the 17th. Okay.
That way we didn't have to rush things.
But everyone's had an opportunity to say. Okay.
All right. Is there any other information? We're going to go, well, item number eight is report of committees. We have none. Number nine is unfinished business, none. And number 10 is introduction and considerations of ordinances and resolutions. And I will pass this on to our councilwoman, Chris Whiteboyd. Is that you?
Yeah. For the board.
Mm-hmm. Trustees of the Roanoke City School Board.
Okay. There's, I guess we can, I can make the announcement and then you want to do the resolution or we can, how do y'all want to do that since we were kind of skipping around here? But anyway, I will go ahead and.
Make the announcement.
Yeah, we can go ahead. Okay. First, I want to say thank you to all of the members of the community that applied for, as a trustee for our school board, Ms. Moon, Mr. Link, Ms. Cantona and Ms. Natasha Saunders and Dr. Jamison, all five of you. We just want to say thank you to all of those candidates. We have selected two members for the, as trustees for the school board and those members are Natasha Saunders and Dr. Eli Jamison, who are current members of the school board and they will be returning. Again, I want to say thank you to all of the applicants. It was not an easy decision and that's why we're running over, still have to go back into closed session because it was a very healthy and lengthy discussion because we had all good candidates and I just want to thank them all for applying on behalf of this council.
All right, we got a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second. Madam Clerk, can you read the title of the paper?
A resolution appointing Elizabeth C.S. Jamison and Natasha N. Saunders as school board trustees of the Roanoke City School Board for terms commencing July 1, 2023 and ending June 30, 2026.
All right, any discussion?
I have a few things I'd like to say. Thank you, Councilmember Whiteboyd, for chairing the personnel committee, bringing us all together to focus on this matter before us. This is my first time being on council during the appointment process and being involved in it from this side of the dais and getting to see those discussions occur, participate in those interviews and have the discussions that led to the decision that's here before us today. I also want to thank Jackie Moon, Liz Cantona, Chris Link for also applying in addition to Dr. Jamison and Natasha Saunders. Just want to focus on some of the things that were said when they were applying and I know that the full school board will address. I mean, Ms. Moon talked about addressing the cycles of poverty. Chris Link talked about being worried about the anti-public school rhetoric that is very prevalent today across the nation. And Liz Cantona focused on, if she were selected, being able to bring something to the school board that is not currently there. And I think that even in the public hearing that we held, a lot of the issues that she sought to address as she was appointed became an example and were illustrated in some of the issues that we saw and just the technology issues that we were facing while conducting that public hearing. I was pleased to hear the responses from Dr. Jamison and Natasha Saunders about the major challenges that we'll be focusing on going forward. Dr. Jamison focused on learning loss, the growth versus the space that's available to us and developing young leaders, not only in the school system, but young leaders on the board in her final term on school board and her tenure there. And then hearing Natasha Saunders talk about trying to work in the next one on more community engagement, but even more so, what struck me the most is when she talked about when she was appointed to her first term, she had to put what she thought was most important onto the back burner because she was appointed just at the time of the height of COVID taking place. And as I reflect further on this, thinking that, you know, she spent so much more of that time in the school board trustee position and a position of service, maybe not coming into it with what she initially sought to do when she may have submitted her application. And I hope that what she sought to do originally, she'll have that opportunity in this upcoming term. One thing I do want to point out as it looks to broadly on the process, I was happy that we conducted interviews, as is our institutional norm and something that we're not required to do, but is something that we can do if any one member of council requests. The only thing that I see under the Virginia code that we are required to do as it relates to this process is hold that public hearing where we take consideration of their names prior to voting. This is not meant so much to be a slight. I would have wished that, I would have seen more participation or support for the incumbents in that public hearing since that is the only criteria that is required in Virginia code when we consider those names. And I hope that when other incumbents are up in the future, that that is something that they will consider. Back again, just we had five wonderful applicants. I want anyone who applied this year or anyone who applies in the future to know that just because an incumbent is up does not mean that they will be selected. And I know that has been what data and history has shown, but that's not what could always happen in the future. And even to remind people that next year, we have one incumbent who will be terming out. And so regardless, there will be one seat that will be new next year and I expect we've only had so many applications in this recent process, we may see a plethora going forward. And I hope that even the applicants that were not successful this time will apply again because I, you know, if we could appoint all five, I think we could, but those are the difficult decisions that we have to make up here. Before I let go of all this, as I discussed, criteria that we're required to do, the additional things that we do, as we are in an appointed process, I hope that somewhere between now and next year, we could find some other additional way to either invite more public participation or make our process by which we appoint just a little more transparent to just build in so that the public perception can see a little more of what went into the decision that we made difficulty, I know, right now behind closed doors. But I'm pleased with the people who reappointed and I look forward to their next three years serving. And that's all I have to say.
Can I just follow up, Personnel Chair, Mr. Pretty?
Yes.
What would you recommend as far as transparency? What could we have done differently that we did not do today that we have been more transparent?
I would have to think on it more. I mean, one of them that's even under the code is we have to have one public hearing, but we can't have more than one public hearing. And while we do vote to go in there to have our discussion behind closed doors, and I think that there are some benefits to that and especially to some frankness and candor that can be had back there, you know, we come out here already with those names and then there might, there could be some benefit to more public discussion on discernment between which individuals we might want to select. We may not have to select all of them at one time and this is something that I will give further thought to over the next year, far prior to applications being sought again. But, but just something, anything, a further step in a direction that I would like to see.
So are you implying we would have the discussion on the dais opposed to the discussion on the selections?
Whatever process that we would decide on that would change from the norms that we have followed currently, I would hope would be an agreement amongst all council members. So I don't want to assume what we would do to change anything right now. I just hope that there will be any thoughts that people might consider having over the next year.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Or any, any individual spots might be improved upon. And if it's, if we, if we can't agree on any of them, then we'll keep doing it the way we have.
Well, we wouldn't change anything on this dais today.
Of course.
I was just wondering, since you made that, since you made that comment, that you may have had something already in mind. And so I wanted to make sure that it was, you know, you, you were on a roll there, so I wanted to make sure that it was, at least we heard what you were thinking.
I wish I had an answer today, but on what feels like a 12 hour day and I know it hasn't been, I don't have an answer yet.
Based on what you have said, Councilmember Pretty, in the past, they took it out because it was, we streamlined the process. The council did at that time. And one of the things was to get to know the candidates was they, there was at one time a reception that was there so that the candidates came and the council had a chance to talk with them individually before having the public hearing. So that is still an option that can be put back on the table for future discussion among the council.
Well, let me say, this process has narrowed down and our agendas are a lot more packed than it was back in the day when I first started in terms of the agenda. And this is a process that we wanted to, to give thought to. I mean, we, we wanted to make sure we're thorough in our review and we got that, those kind of things, but I don't want to come out here on the dais and discuss that. I think there were certain things that we need to do. And you can, nobody prevents you from getting to know each candidate. I mean, you can call them up, have lunch with them, coffee with them. That's on you. It's on you. But I mean, with the agenda we have, we're pushing to get through it right now with the time things that we have, even today is a good example of that. So we can talk about that, but basically we're working with limited time. We've had a long thing to do. I think we've accomplished a lot today, but that's something we took in consideration in the past. I was, I was part of that in terms of changing this up, but we always was transparent in what we did. And as you will notice around the state, especially in our areas, I think we're one of the most open school board candidate selection processes we have is what we do.
Yes, Mayor, if I could just add from a prior locality that you're well familiar with, where I used to work.
Yeah.
The interviews were held in closed session. And this council, I know, has always made a point to hold those interviews so that the public can observe.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, well, we get going on the discussions. Okay, let's vote. Madam Clerk, roll please.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Aye.
Mr. Volason.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Pretty.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the resolution passes and congratulations to Dr. Jamison and Natasha Saunders. All right. Inquiries or comments by the mayor and members of city council, are there any? Comment?
I just have one quick comment. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, first of all, congratulate our superintendent, Dr. White, on, when a superintendent for the state for the year, what a huge accomplishment. And I could not say that without commending Ms. Sanchez Jones because one of the aspects was the English learners and that is a demographic that she works very hard with and I would hope that she would just add to that and tell us exactly what she does because it really helped us. And, and our superintendent got an award based on some of the work that you had done, recognized for that.
The work was done by Mr. Alder, Mr. Christopher Alder. He is the head of the EL department.
He's the head, okay.
Yes, English Language Department. My role in this is just making sure that the students attend school and graduate, so, which we had had a very high graduation rate in the past.
Did you hear what she said? My role is just making sure that they go to school and graduate. Yeah, we cannot minimize that, Ms. Sanchez Jones. So thank you for your role in that.
Thank you.
But anyway, congratulations again to Dr. White on a major accomplishment.
All right, any more comments from council? Mr. Pretty?
Four very quick ones. One, just want to recognize that Sheriff Hatch was here earlier. I don't know why, but he was here, now he's gone. I wasn't sure if it was for a particular reason, but recognize that he was here. Two, regarding taxes, personal property taxes, I know, I believe most of us got an email about some complaint, data system issues. I've even faced one similar myself where despite having come in person and updating my address, they sent my taxes to my old address, which I would love for the people who live there now to pay them. But I know that I have to. And so that is something that if you haven't received yours yet or otherwise, I know that we're transitioning systems now. I hope that we can look into making sure that this won't be an issue in the future so that I will always be able to pay my taxes. Animal control, talked to someone who had just a complaint that they were unable to get a response to, and I don't know what the animal control issue was, but what the response they received was that they just don't have staffs for weekend service. And that's something that we've brought up before, which is what we share with any firm constituent. And so I hope that we can further investigate at some point what can be done on the animal control aspect on the police department. And then finally, this is not to make a full opinion or any strong opinion on what should be done as it relates to Evan Springs, but I was asked, friends of Evan Springs has asked me to just share this magazine, to pass it around the dais, Landscape Architect Magazine about the potential uses for stormwater management that focus on public use of a watershed in some aspects and some kind of park type structure that might be related to tourism. And they're very keen on that they only had one copy of this magazine, so they asked if I would bring it up so that it could just be passed around at whatever point people want to see as a potential option going forward, although there's not any comment on any zoning application that has not been submitted yet. And that is it. I'm done.
You sure?
Since, since Councilmember Pretty opened the door, I just want, because I wasn't going to say anything, but it was mentioned in the March six minutes about the animal control department. You and I, Mayor, as you know, we did talk about that. I was told when I called about a, about a pit bull being at large in my neighborhood and I couldn't take my dog out, I was told they did not have any, anyone that could come over and that that was a service they did not, no longer provide because there was only three of them. And therefore I needed to see if I could, could kind of trap the dog.
A pit bull?
Yeah. So anyway, we brought that up and Bob, you were not here at the time. Brent was sitting in your seat, but the conversation was brought up to refer to the manager to bring back.
And it's actually even worse than it was at that time. One, the, the policy that's in place is that, I mean, they, they are currently not capturing animals at large unless they pose an immediate risk with it. That was actually, when we had three, we actually are down to one or two officers. That is a very difficult position to retain people.
So it's more about staffing than it is.
Yeah, although even at fully staffed, and fully staffed again means three officers. That policy has been in place for a little over a year, that unless the animal poses an immediate risk, they're not going to trap. You know, the, kind of the stereotypical, you know, the dog catcher goes out looking for a dog roaming around the neighborhood, they generally don't do that. But it's even more challenging now because we have even fewer officers.
Mr. Cal, I really wasn't going to say anything, but I have to say anything because just last week, I was talking to a friend of mine in front of her house and a pit bull came running and she tried to get in the same side of the car that I was on. And we couldn't close the door because we were both in the driver's seat. You know, she was close to that door. She couldn't run around the car. It was scary. I mean, that was, that was, it was a pit bull, so that is pretty scary when you're just out having a conversation with a neighbor and the dog comes running and she tries to jump in the car in the same seat that I'm in. It was pretty bad.
And I'm going, little dog trying to get into the patio door.
Well, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, that was, that was Gloria Randolph King and she'll tell you, she, she, you ask her what happened to us last week. It was pretty bad.
And I'm a little dog trying to get into the patio door.
Well, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, that was, that was Gloria Randolph King, and she'll tell you, she, 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 you ask her what happened to us last week, she will tell you, Ms. Randolph King.
Well, can we, I mean, we laugh at that, but this is serious.
It's serious, it is, if you watch it on.
Can we, what can we do? Is it staffing? We need to get more staffed now?
We, we can't even keep the staff we have, because it is a job no one wants to do. It's a very difficult job. So even, even at full, we're rarely fully staffed in that position. Yes, I mean, if you, if you were going to return to that level of service, you need significantly more officers to do that work, yes.
Well, I, I think at some point, we need to consider that as a, as a council, what we're going to do, because this city is large, we're going to have people get attacked by dogs. I had a gentleman call me, said in the top of his house, there were a lot of raccoons, and he called down, and just, he wanted to get some help in getting the raccoons out, and he was told.
Yeah.
Tried to fox.
Yeah, the wildlife is, is another, I mean, I know it goes without saying, but of course, all those dogs you're talking about belong to someone as well, and there also needs to be obviously some accountability associated with those individuals keeping their dogs on their property.
And that's what I was going to say, because it was, it was my neighbors, but, you know, I'm not going in there knocking on the door.
I understand that.
You know what happens when you knock on someone's door now?
Well, what?
You know, they gotta go.
What's going to happen, and I'll, I'll close this, but what's going to happen is that pit bull will attack your dog.
Yeah, that's why I was holding it, yeah.
You can be walking your dog, he'll attack your dog, and that has happened. I've gotten calls, they went to court, and it was, at the time, Chief Romans was working it, and the person, the chief animal control person was ill, but that's a legitimate concern in a city this size, and he's attacking your dog. Because pit bulls are, well, they're not classified as that way, but we all know they're vicious dogs.
I mean, you can go to court, but, you know.
No, I'm thinking the people and the kids handling a pit bull, the dog is bigger than they are.
Be nice if this part of the meeting didn't feel like a pit bull.
I didn't hear you.
Be nice if this part of the meeting didn't feel like a pit bull.
Yeah. And the other piece to that, Mr. Manager, if I could, it relates to the dog issue, was the, the two ladies that came and talked about the postmaster in the mailbox. Did we get any resolution with regards to?
Yeah, the information, the, if you remember at that meeting, and this was a while back, the, the information that they were sharing was what was being conveyed through the media was not accurate, that the dog one time had gotten loose. So they were trying to, part of their reason for being here was trying to convince the postmaster that that information was not accurate, that, you know, that was this, and I actually don't know, I don't know whether that ultimately got resolved, because it's a postmaster issue, but we've not heard anything from them in quite some time. I don't know if any of you all have either, but.
Because I just took the position that it, well, never mind what I thought. Okay.
Mr. Cow, it might be interesting to see about maybe outsourcing the animal control. I know there are plenty of wildlife specialists that are here.
And actually, to some degree, it's what, you know, we've got partners that will aid, particularly in wildlife capturing. The dog piece, it's actually, I mean, it is a piece of law enforcement activity in Virginia, because it is, it's property that you're actually taking, taking hold of and some other stuff.
Gotcha.
But it just, yeah, it, it really is an issue of being able to get not only the current staff full, but if there is an increased level of service, we've got to go beyond that, that staff as well.
But I, I really do think something we should, we need to look at, because I think reliable, if somebody gets bit, yeah. Okay, we don't need, we're going to go into recess now and go into closed session. We're going to need to do this.
Appointments now or do we come back?
If you're ready to do appointments now, you can do those later, understanding that then you'll go into closed session, come out and have to certify.
Okay. Can we do that now?
Yeah, we can do, do the, for some point. Thank you.
So for committee vacancies and appointments, for the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals, we are appointing John Hostetler for the unexpired term of office ending June 30, 2024. We have three reappointments. One is Mr. Jeffrey Schauer for a three-year term, residency waiver is required, Anthony Smith for a three-year term, and Christopher Link for a three-year term. For the Court, Community Corrections Program, Regional Community Justice Board, we are reappointing Hillary Griffith for a three-year term, and Judge, Judge Griffith and Judge Scott Geddes for a three-year term, and both of those require residency waivers. For the Mill Mountain Advisory Board, the appointment of Sarah Carpenter for a three-year term of office. For the Roanoke Public Library Board, three-year term for Liz Cantona. And for Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, for a one-year term, the appointment of Anita Price. That's it.
All right. You've heard the, the appointments or reappointments. When the clerk calls your name, if you're in support of it, please state that you're voting for all nominees. All right, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Cobb.
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd.
All nominees.
Mr. Volason.
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
All nominees.
Mr. Pretty.
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee.
All nominees. Thank you. All right, we're now, we're going to closed session.